Let's start this meeting of the Board of Education at seven eighteen. I appreciate everybody's patience. We had some technical difficulties, but I think we are up and running now. So if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody to special meeting, Board of Education, for the purpose of discussing, discussing the budget proposal. To start, I will start out with public participation in two minute time limit. Please begin with your, your names and address for the minutes. The members of the book talent Board of Education, welcome the members of the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board administration may respond to comments or any points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and in an effort to proceed in a timely manner, follow up discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting session. Those online, if you would like to speak, please raise your zoom hand and we will call upon you. Those in the room, raise your hand and the hour will find you. If anybody online would like to speak, please raise your zoom hand.
Do you want to confirm that Dana can hear us? Put it down.
Oh.
You did already, right?
Okay. Opportunity. If anybody would like to speak, in those in the room, feel free to raise your hand. Those online, raise your zoom hand and we will recognize you. All right. Hearing none, we will close public participation. Right. So with purposes tonight, and I certainly appreciate everybody's patience and understanding. But after last meeting, where we took a look at the initial superintendent's proposed budget, we had what I feel was incredibly good conversations, discussion of the various aspects of it. A series of schema were identified coming out of those notes. These, and I believe it's four, these are meant to be conversation starters. The intent is to take what we had talked about and try to guide those into some ideas. Some, some conversations, some things that we could talk about and really try to guide those in. From a timeline perspective, what I'd like to see is, you know, as we, we discuss through these, we ask questions, we make modifications. By the end of this session, I'd like the board to have come to at least a consensus as to a single path that we can direct the superintendent to take, to produce for the next meeting. That next meeting, the board will vote on it. Under the assumption that it passes, it will then be prepared and handed off to the town council for inclusion, sorry, handed off to the town manager for inclusion in his budget proposal, which then goes to the town council for their deliberations and adjustments as necessary before going to write. So again, my intent here is to really kind of feed upon what, what this board is very good at. And that being the open and honest and respectful discussion. Dr. Willett is here with as, as much information as, you know, he could possibly pull up and cram. Not just in relation to what's specifically on here, but some of the additional things that we anticipated might be asked or might, might happen here. Recognize and, you know, want to take full responsibility that a lot of this information came out very recently. And I sincerely apologize that there hasn't been a lot of time for people to really digest that. So, you know, keeping in, keeping in mind that a lot of this is very new. That, that's what we're here for. That's where the questions are going to come up and that's where the conversations are going to happen. I will do everything that I can to ensure that, you know, we have an order as far as how comments and considerations are going, please help by, you know, if you're raising your hand or making it known that you'd like to speak next. Jen, if you could help me keep an eye on things and making sure that, you know, people are getting the chance to not only vote, vote their concerns, their comments, but also to try to guide these in. At some point, as the conversation seems to reach a good point, you know, I'm going to start asking to really kind of rein these in to try to get these into one schema that we're going to look at. And modify specifically, so. Yeah, that's right. So when Dr. Willington returns, what I'm going to ask him to do is to very, very high level go through and for those of you online, we'll, we'll try to share the document so, so that you can see it as well as here. But to, to go from a high level, what the five schema actually are, what the high level characteristics of those are. And so we can then start talking about that. Before we get started and in an effort to delay just a few minutes of time, do we have any questions to the intent? Okay. All right. Well then, we'll get started in about a second. You know, here the door closed with the footsteps. So Dr. Will, so what I would ask first, is, is one, if we could go through from a very, very high level and, and give kind of the overview of what the five schema actually are, or what those, you know, stay up, what the characteristics essentially are, that's that the board can, you know, get an overview of that and then we will, we'll, we'll start the conversation.
Yeah, yeah, please as well. We could, we could share those to the, the public and see.
As an aside, if there's a name connected, I will leverage some people in the room, but if it's a random thing, I'm not doing that.
Absolutely.
Right. So, um. So the Board of Education presented a couple of scenarios here. Called them schema, the budget schemas. I, I used the word option platform. These were presented as possibilities. Each of these possibilities has various reductions associated with them or program adjustments associated with them. As I was working through it, I did put some of the things like retirement differentials that could be up in personnel considerations, but either way, it's, it's in there. So you can kind of see. So each of these scenarios has, you know, drawbacks, advantages and drawbacks. I guess that is why, because I think people were formulating their ideas. You know, they wanted to see what these looked like. And so for instance, budget option one would be no staff reductions and no impacts to music or art. So no staff reductions means that of course, any reductions that are going to happen have to happen in other program areas, not, not people. I tried to take into account things that the board was talking about over the period of the last few weeks. I make adjustments everywhere could, including certain areas of special education where we're going to take some more risks than we have taken in the past. We'd be cutting it much closer than we have in the past. And so there were adjustments made there. There were things that we had talked about internal expulsion. As some of you know, participated in expulsion hearings. There are associated costs with that. And we have had an option where we've been using sometimes an option where we can provide an internal expulsion rather than an outplacement because outplacements cost more. So there was, you know, some possibility here where we could use offsite locations and if we had expulsions, which we tend to have, or we had special program needs, we could put this in, you know, individual in one of our facilities, not on the main building campus. Not in the main buildings and we have done that at one point before and it saved us quite a bit of money in the long run, but there's a cost to it. And that was going to be in the budget to kind of help us do that. And that would be taken out here because there are other, there are other, are other options for expulsion. And if they, you know, we don't know for sure if anybody even occur next year, like none of them will, you know. Ed tech initiative, you know, you can't, we can't do no staff reductions and then, you know, go down in percentage from a lot. If you think about it, every percent is $450,000. So going from 11, you know, to eight is going to be 1.2 million dollars. You can't get to 1.2 million dollars unless you're reducing other things. If there isn't going to be a reduction in staff, other things would have to go. So the ed tech initiative one to one would be, you know, either not funded, or I would have to try to find some alternative source of funding for some or part of that, which I would. If the board went in this direction, I would immediately, you know, try to do what I could to leverage anything that I had grants wise to kind of prioritize that. So maybe I would, you know, utilize some of our grants in ways that would support that and not other things, you know, that's an option. It's not an option that's easy to execute, but I would look into it and see what I could do. Prometheus, Lexia, MTSS. The must haves in this scenario were not MTSS, so that is removed. Library, media, move pathways removed. Learning lens is actually portrait of a graduate. It's work that we're doing in portrait of a graduate. So in some cases, I think I wrote learning list slash portrait of a graduate.
Uh, I don't know. Which option are you speaking about right now?
Option one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to go from left to right.
Yeah, okay. I just want to be clear. Thank you.
So, uh, yep, and, um, summer custodian, these aren't people that are FD full time, but we bring in summer custodians helping up the grounds. We would pull back on that. Um, some, some are maintenance. We reduce our summer maintenance support. That is, you know, going to create some stress, but some of the grounds and things would not get to where people are used to seeing them. We cut back our curriculum writing, which right now, some of you have gone to some of the instruction rounds. Some of you have talked about this in curriculum. And I showed you some of the projects we were working on. We would cut back on that and I would work exclusively. You know, within AR days, I couldn't grant any special projects severance pay. We would take a chance and lower what we set aside. But, you know, if you end up having a situation where that goes above, it just goes negative. There are iPads requested that are removed, special ed legal services. One of the back Q and A's was about this, you know, we have a lot more now. There's a lot more IPTs. IEPs, a lot more people that, um, you know, are availing themselves of due process rights. So that has been something that, you know, I've noticed going up. We would be cutting back on what we were asking for there. And, you know, we just take the risk that if we ran over, we ran over. Especially paraprofessional services, we contract right now with an outside agency, you know, so while we have openings, we contract because we can't get anyone here. And that agency places people because we have to have them for IEPs. So even if you see openings, we have an agency that we contract to send us people as a subcontracted. And we did that with the, um, the school psychologist too, because we need one at Birchgrove. We couldn't find one. There's like 26 openings in the states. So we subcontracted for that's another example. So even though that, that position doesn't have, you know, hasn't been filled, we had to subcontract to get a human being working in that area. We would cut that, the funds that we had set aside for that. We put that in there because we knew we weren't getting enough people, but we would reduce it and remove it. It's a safety because we have to have IEPs, but we'll just have to try to figure out a different way. ESY, ESY program right now has special ed and then it has an inclusion component where kids that are not identified yet as special ed, but might be on the radar for special ed would be getting some summer assistance to try to sometimes head off them getting identified. We would have to, you know, narrow that group to only kids with IEPs and nobody in the inclusion spectrum. So that would happen. And then near pod, some of the teachers got near pod. We would just discontinue all, all near pod is like a, it's a brand name of software. It has various components to it. You might've seen it before, but we wiped that out completely. So that's option one. And what it did is it preserved all staff. There's no staff eliminations. It didn't touch anything in music and art as requested. Option two, the only reduction to staff was the pre K program. So many of these other things are similar in terms of the program reductions and adjustments, retirement differential, special ed, near pod, tau, lexia. Most of that stuff is similar, just different composition. You can see kind of the numbers, you know, we didn't have to. Each one has its own sort of advantage or disadvantage. This percentage is a little bit lower, obviously, because you're, you know, wiping out that pre K. And essentially most of this, I won't ramble on with it. A lot of it's the same, except there's no pre K. Then option three had more must haves. It had a keeping the social worker, keeping two SROs, keeping or adding three time, three full time security positions and not touching the, not touching the one to one initiative. So in order to achieve that, other, other staff taken out of the mix. So you had the PPT facilitator gone, obviously job coach not there, 4.5 of the, you know, that whole pre K program not there. And then various reductions and program adjustments, very similar to the ones you see in others. Not as much as option four, which we'll get to in a minute, but, um, you know, there was program reductions taken to try to balance it out and still keep what was asked for here as the must haves. So it essentially took out anything that wasn't the must have and left in what seemed like was desired here. And then it ended up being a nine point O two, unless you do further staff productions. Now, what seems to have been the theme was what some people were, you know, referring to as level services. You know, the, these are provided with no real staff reductions here. There, there is an option, if you scroll down, you know, to get to an minute that actually gets, and it has them. So by budget option four, the must has and budget option four were two SROs, MTSS programming, keeping pathways. You'll notice that in order to, um, you know, do that, we try to get it a little bit lower than the other options. There's additional staff taken that go beyond the staff that were requested in the budget. Not much, but a little bit here. So we keep the SROs, we keep the MTSS, we keep the pathways. What goes is the pre K program, the social worker, the PPT facilitator, the job coach and point seven of a nurse at TIS. It's one of the nurses, physicians, there's a point seven that would go. Those reductions and then the retired reductions on the program adjustments, you'll notice there's quite, there's more than there are in the others. That's that allows this budget to be a six point seven seven, because, you know, the range by the other side, this was down to a six, seven, seven. It does not reduce a lot of staff that are currently working, but except for that point seven. So it retains a lot of the currently working staff, adds a couple of the things that superintendent's budget had in it, SROs, MTSS pathways, but reduces a lot of other program elements to get there. So that's a six. The other thing to notice about it is it does talk a little bit more about the insurance. It uses the ERF as an energy offset. These are things that are not related to, you know, people or a specific program, but are leveraging some of the resources the board has. So you would be giving up a hundred thousand of your ERF to offset energy. You would be looking to use more of your insurance again, and that would require conversations with the town and so on. That's how this one gets down to about six point seven seven. And I kept plugging away at it. You know, I think originally I was interpreting marching orders here as trying to keep everything level with these changes. This five nine is with staff reductions. So the way to get lower than that six requires staff productions. So it also takes away, and we're going to have to just figure it out. It takes away a lot of things that, um, you know, that we were hoping to get in the coming year, like the Windows 11, you know, the monitors, things like that. It puts a lot of those things off again. And whenever something like that gets put off again, I honestly don't know whether I can find something else to fund that or not. But I would make it part of my, you know, understood marching orders that if I, we couldn't get it through the operating budget to try to get it through grants. So I would just try. But this one takes away the things that the superintendent's budget requested. Pre K, social worker, facilitator, job coach, stipends for link leader, stipends for library, stipends for pathways, stipends for MTSS. But it goes further and it takes out that point seven nurse, one point O custodian, four teachers, so he had specified. And four para educators. So that reduction would be, you know, that five point seven staff or rather nine point seven staff if you're in the pair of educators. And it would also be reductions in these lines and pay very careful attention to some of this stuff because when you're going through it, you'll notice that some of the lines actually also take out the athletics program. So this takes out the middle school athletics program from the budget as well. There would be no middle school athletics program. So it's many of the things that you see above, but it also takes out the pay to play TMS. That, those are basically the same thing. I ended up duplicating on the right as I was moving in kind of like, but. So the TMS athletics is out. You know, again, library purchases, you're still using ERF to pop set. You know, the athletics pay to play was brought down to 150, it goes back up to 200. You know, some of the things that were also talked about by the board over time, trying to lessen the impact on parents with pay to play and sports and things like that. They're put back up to the, the 200 and all that type of thing. So this isn't in a nutshell, but it gives you kind of an idea of, you know, what you can, what, what can be done with some of the things that people wanted to keep from the nine zone to the six, seven zone. And then to get really below six, seven, one would have to consider additional things beyond, you know, beyond just program elements, you'd have to consider people.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Will. So questions and clarifications, let's go around the room. Jayden?
Yeah. Just a, just a quick clarifying question. With the security personnel. So if you go to, you know, option three, for example, there's two full time SROs and then three full time security positions. Number one, what's the, what's the difference between number one, the positions themselves, number two, the pay, what it would per position?
Well, SROs are going to get paid a little bit more, you know, the security personnel. The difference really is SROs are police officers. They have firearm, they go through all post training. They also have the psych screenings on a regular rotating basis. You know, we can require site screenings and things like that of our security officers, but our security officers, we have one now, rather, John Cronin. And so our security officers are not armed with a firearm. They are going to be people that have experience being security officers or are former police, but it may be former police that decided they did not want to keep up their post certification with their firearm certification, because it has to happen on a regular basis. And so, you know, these security people can intervene with things, but they wouldn't have a firearm. They'd be useful if there's a DCF issue and we're told to hold the child at the school and a parent, you know, we're told to keep, you know, somebody away from somebody else and somebody shows up, but they're not armed, the security officer can get involved with that and help out with a situation like that and can provide certain security things that are similar. And so they've been very useful. The SATS officer, right now we use him for also school avoidance and truancy issues. Ride alongs, we'll go to houses with our social workers. Our social worker will interact with the family, the security officers there to make sure everybody's okay and that things don't go sideways. Also, I will use a security officer to help transport, for instance, to a shelter. If there is, as the McKinney Vento homeless liaison, part of my job is to make sure that any family that becomes homeless in Talon, you know, I doubt to them, make sure that they're doing okay and they have resources if they need it. Sometimes I'll put people up with apartments or other things like that. One of the things that we'll do sometimes is if it's an estrangement issue, somebody's leaving a house under arrest. You might go to a shelter and then kids need transport from a shelter. A SATS officer has training to be able to drive them. And so they can bring, you know, somebody to, from shelter instead of to and from a home. That shelter may not be in Talon.
Right.
So these security officers are really helpful. Typically an SRO is not going to be doing that piece. The SROs aren't taking someone back and forth to a shelter or anything like that. The SROs are going to be involved with, you know, police matters that might be in the school. They'll be involved with people sending inappropriate pictures that go beyond one kid to a kid and engage an adult. That's a police matter. Police matters might be, um, it's something that goes beyond the possession of drugs, the distribution of drugs. Police matters will be involved with, obviously, in the most terrible scenarios, if there's someone acting violent, they have firearms. They're going to be done. So they're, they're really different classes of position and they have different assets. They would not be necessarily doing home McKinney Vento work or social work, but they would be doing those other things. And I might be able to gauge them in things like dare.
Right.
You know, on stuff like that. I, when I taught on one of the classes, skills for adolescence, I regularly brought in the SRO and we, we had a good time with the kids and they, they would engage with us and the kids and team, you know, team leadership. Skills for adolescence, of course, is that type of thing. So the police will get involved, things like that too. It's not all, you know, drugs, alcohol and all that, but, you know, but they're not usually doing McKinney management stuff.
Sure, sure. Mentioned in there, the security, security positions would be working, you know, sort of directly with social workers in a couple of different, in a couple of different circumstances and whatnot. And I just want to get a clarifying sort of point. I feel like the answer always changes because of all the numbers we're looking at. I just want to get, get it clarified here. How many social workers do we have currently and where are they? Where, what buildings are they currently?
BGP, TIS, LEAP program at the high school. And the one that would join us if we did this would be a middle school, right? And probably would do six, 12 general ed. The one that is currently positioned at the high school is, is a LEAP program social worker. And that LEAP program social worker, LEAP is one of our, one of our behavior management programs. It's also a cost avoidance program for the district. So we, it's like internal, it's internal out placements go to LEAP. So there's especially, there's a social worker dedicated to the LEAP program itself.
Gotcha.
And LEAP extends to all four schools that that individual is just because is positioned at the high school, but serves LEAP.
So, so how many total social workers is that?
So, yeah, it's the, it's the three.
Three. So there's one in each.
And then we have so school sites. You know, and each building will accept the return of Ireland at Birchgrove, then you have school counselors and they have different roles.
So then the difference between a social worker and a school psychologist in this, in this case?
Those psychologists do testing in schools. They're typically doing like academic testing. They also do aid certain behavior measurements, things like that. Social workers tend to be working with families that are more kind of, I, I want to use the correct terminology here because each does a lot of amazing work. And so a school site can meet with a student and do meet with students, but they also have this very large responsibility of, of assessments and testing for PPTs. And I, so when you're doing, um, they have a lot of tests they provide with cartoons and other things that they are certified to provide. So then that data and those tests are used in the IEPs and the PPTs. So they have large loads of testing that they have to do. And occasionally they'll meet with students or do things when they're, you know, when they're engaged or asked to do it. But the social workers are more counseling, you know, going to the houses and the families and stuff like that. School counselors engage in student wellness at a tier one level, but they're doing a lot of scheduling. They do a lot of academic, you know, counseling. They do all placements and, and all of the schedule related academic placements and running the schedules, you know what I mean? So it's, it's. Running the schedules, you know what I mean, so it's, it's, they're different roles within the institution, even though it seems like when you're a big group.
Gotcha, and I appreciate the answer, because one of the things since our last meeting, it, it, that I, I couldn't help myself, but just. There's a lot of information out there about, on, on social workers and what they're responsible for, and I'm assuming we'll get back around to go through. Um sort of where we stand on, you know, the budgets and whatnot, so I just want to get my questions across this first round and whatnot, but um. Part of it, I mean, these are important positions, I, what I'm struggling to understand is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. In Birch Grove, how many students would you say there are right now?
There's estimated four seventy one to five.
So we have a ratio of one to four seventy something, one social worker to four hundred and seventy families. In T I S, how many students?
It's gonna be about the same, but give me a sorry, we do the.
No problem, no problem, yeah. Either way, one to one hundred is enough, one to two hundred, one to three hundred, one to four hundred. Again, we can go next door, we can go to other states, we can go to New Haven, and again, I'll get into, I'll get into, you know, all the data that, that. You know, I've collected over the last few days or, or a week or so, um but to hear one. To four hundred seven, four hundred seventy or something like that, um I'm not really sure, you know, how that contributes toward, toward, toward. Letting these folks, letting these professionals be as effective as they, as they should be, number one, and as they could be, and so. That's why I'm sort of, I'm, I'm curious about this, because to, to say we've got, I want to say total. And you, maybe you've got the numbers pulled up right now.
Four sixty two, uh B G P, four eighty one, T I S. Four sixty nine, uh T M S. High school, I think it's six fifty.
Oh, I choose six fifty.
Six fifty four, it might have fluctuated about more, but yeah. Supposed to be nineteen hundred or? It's, it's two thou, the total number for this year is two thousand one hundred and forty five.
Okay, so, okay, so two thousand, I'll go two thousand, nice, nice round number, we divide that by three. Oh, I don't like that number, but it's about six hundred and seventy students. For one social worker we currently have. And that's tremendously terrifying, and especially, you know, in the age of, uh, of, of the mental health and, 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 you know, the social emotional aspect of. Of what we're trying to fund, um I gotta be honest with you, some of these, some of these proposals, um. Is this, I'm gonna be honest, I'm gonna be honest, eh, eh, it's not enough, eh, eh, to, to, to even consider subtracting a social worker from. The proposals that we're seeing right now, um that's sort of where my head's at, and again, I expect we'll go back around and go through some of why we're thinking, what we're thinking. Um so I appreciate you answering that question, um I, I, I just, as of right now. And just again, before everybody gets their points out or their questions out, um eh, the first thing I would mention is, is, is the attention that's being paid toward. What social work is, what it does for students and, and how lacking we already are in this area. Um I feel like that connects directly to one of our goals of supporting the M T S S uh initiatives and whatnot and the sort of. Uh tier supports, one of the things I, I was looking at was what is tier one compared to tier two, compared to tier three? And that tier one for teachers and educators might be, you know, mean something different than that of counselors, because they have different roles and different jobs. But it's the sort of foundational level of what is being, what, 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 what the service is being provided to the students and, and. Seeing, let's see, if we go down to option four. Budget option four on the top sort of portion of this, you know, we're subtracting one of those social workers that's been proposed for. The schools, this social worker would make four in our school district, four, for two thousand students, that's one per five hundred students in our district. I can't confidently say voting in favor of that, I'm doing what's best for that child in that school. By not giving them access, and by the way, their families, and, and there's stories about how families benefit from having social workers in these buildings. Um and so eh, I, knowing the roles of what our S R Os are doing, what our security personnel's doing, what our social workers are doing. What our psychologists are doing and what our guidance counselors are doing, I think that's gonna be a big, I hope it's a big part of the conversation tonight, because I think they're all. Important roles, and if we're talking about, and I know, Brian, you've been a, an advocate for the interventionists and the, in the interventions and whatnot. I think they're crucial i- i- in, in that, in that uh, in that process, and so um. I'll pass it on to, I think we're going around, Brian, uh my fellow Jets fan here, miserable Jets fans, thus. Um so I appreciate you answering that, Dr. Will.
Yeah, I, I see no one in it. Now there's somebody.
Are you done for now?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, great. All right.
Allison.
So, okay. I'll try to take it easy, gentlemen. Um I'd just like to uh mention one of our goals here. On our agenda here, it's always on every agenda, does engage in a transparent and responsible budget process. That maximizes innovation and efficiency. So I struggle, and I've been struggling the past couple of weeks throughout this process. That we, or this process has failed us all. Absolutely has a hundred and ten percent failed us all. We started with such a high budget. That I feel that, and then all of a sudden at midnight, I get submitted. Having to go and attempt with other things today, which I barely even reviewed what these other options are. Due to the fact, fact of lack of time and preparing for this. The town elected me to be here, and I really feel that I'm not do, doing the best service possible. By getting this information so late, to even have a discussion on what these ramifications are of adjusting any of these programs here. Without having to go dig through the numbers, seeing how this impacts one line item versus another line item. To get to down to a more reasonable budget, in my own opinion. You know, others, you know, like the eight, nine, ten percent, I would like less than that personally. After hearing from many members of the town that people are worried about the housing reevaluations and. Other things that are happening in the economy and just in town in general. So I, I just want to put that out there, I'm really disappointed in the way this has happened, and even as this Q and A document. Some of these even at two o'clock today were just submitted or answered. And there were still questions that I put on here over a week ago. I know Bill isn't mine, but I know that he submitted other questions a week ago that aren't even on the list yet. That I'm supposed to make a determination in the direction that we're supposed to be going, but I don't have the complete data that I'm even looking for. So I, I really, I, I had a loss, I'll, I'll bring a few things up, but I'm just really voicing my frustration and. So, eh, it's not anyone, just, this, just Jim, just, just the, 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 the whole situation. I think we, we could have done better. So, um now, do we cover the teacher certification uh cost? In the budget for the teachers' union, they pay their own certification fees?
Yeah.
Okay, that was just in the governor's budget, I didn't know if we were, he's covering those for the teachers supposedly. In the proposed budget, so I didn't know if that was something we could save some money, but I guess not. So the other thing was, so you referenced that we have the special education of parents and that we subcontract out. And we need them, you know, to provide the district services. So if we don't hide, if we're going to be cutting these on whichever option we're looking at. How are we gonna supply the parent that we need for the special ed if this is a need for a certain room or teacher or. You know, student, how does that just all of a sudden appear to be taken care of?
Well, eh, 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 it's gonna be a struggle, it's, it's not gonna just all of a sudden be taken care of, it, we're just gonna have to um. We're, we're gonna have to figure out something between now and the time that the budget starts, I know that people have looked at these open positions. And said, why don't we cut the open positions, so. If five point nine cuts the open positions, that parent, um company that we would contract with. Um you know, we may have to figure out if we can retool some of our grants to, to pay for more. People to be contracted services that aren't necessarily that, but maybe from crack or an area service center like Easton, um. You know, these would be things that we would try to leverage to get to that budget level without cutting more people. So it's not gonna be easy, it's, it's just gonna have to try other options, like looking through area arrests. What they're called as regional educational service centers and see what they have to offer. Um and then what would happen is that we'd come out of your consulting, you, you know, we probably, you know, how, you see some lines that are overspent. And other lines that are underspent, we'd, we'd have to overspend some lines and underspend others to balance it out.
All right, all right.
But it's, it's reacting to what people have been saying, why are those there, why don't you take those out, taking those out means then.
They're not there, okay.
Doing other adjustments.
All right, um so the T I S, one of these had a removal of a nurse, what would? What, who is there now and how would that operate with students? That are sick, need aid or whatever medicine or whatever.
More stress on the nurses that remain.
Excuse me?
It would put more stress on the nurse, the nurses that remain.
How many are there currently?
We'd have to, right now, it's the two, two are in that office with that one, so we'd have to look at it across the board and maybe split people point five, point five and have them. Alternate days in different schools based on need or burst, you know, if there's a lot of sick kids, might move. One of the two out of T M S, move them down there for a certain time, have to change days, do some kind of rotational schedule, it's not great. But, um, you know, trying to find ways to do this again without impacting.
No, no, I understand all that, I'm not, I'm not.
So we have to create a schedule.
So is this an actual person that has a job right now or is this?
It is a person, yeah, but.
So this person won't be losing their job?
Eh, eh, I think it's a position that we're trying to fill right now, because someone just left it, so that's why I came on here, it's a point seven.
All right.
So that there's, there's an effort to fill it, but we just wouldn't fill it.
But it seems like that we, we would be able to rotate people around to have coverage.
We have to do something, but you know, again, the, the people doing the job will feel stressed by this, it won't be ideal, and there'll be a lot of moving around and trying to cover the bases.
Yes.
Just like any situation, I imagine people doing, you're taking.
No, I, I, I understand.
But yeah, we would, you know, Mike Walton, I would have to create some kind of schedule that made that. Cover all the bases.
All right.
I'm sorry, but I can make a correction, I forgot that we have one grant funded social worker, so you have four, there's two assigned to leave, one of them's a grant. One of them's not part of the operating budget, but I forgot to mention that, sorry.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
There, there's three, but there's one grant position. You know, an operating budget, there's three, but there is one that's paid for by grant, and so.
So there's four currently, where's that fourth?
They are the two, the one is the grant and the others, they're LEAP, they're LEAP, the two are LEAP and two are school, and this one would be for six twelve.
Got you, okay, thank you.
One is for LEAP, um for the littler buggers, and then one is LEAP high school.
Got you. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, and.
I'm sorry.
So, I like to get into the um, the hot, real hot, the hot, hot button items here. Athletics. So, just to get a little background, uh I apologize, I'm trying to find the right tab on what I had here. So I know the athletics, we have, um. Quite a bit of cost of running, I don't know what the total is from transportation to. Stipends for coaches to equipment and travel and all of these. Other things, I guess the, the, the question that I'm trying to find out is. So if we had, we have all these different athletics, I know we have. Athletic parents or guardians help pay for a portion of that, what is the cost of the district after this? After we take in the monies from the uh pay to play? What is the cost to the district that, that the town is supporting? Because obviously it's probably not a hundred percent, right, we're talking about eliminating all of middle school athletics. Townwide, like your schoolwide.
Yeah, um athletics hits a, a couple of lines, but it would be in the hundreds of thousands that you'd save. If you wiped out everything.
No, I'm not looking to wipe out, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to find what the, what the cost, I don't want to wipe out the athletics, that's not my goal here, my goal. Is to say, do we need to raise the pay to play from two hundred to three hundred? To help offset, maybe we find some, some, some monies to pay for, say, a social worker, right, like, or, or something in, in that nature or. Uh monitors for teachers, I, I'm just trying to, in my brain, like, figure out, you know, what this pay to play, how much it covers. For the cost of the, of the current athletics that we have going now.
Increased it by a hundred, you, you'd get forty thousand, say, out of that to apply towards.
So, so still be short quite a bit, but.
Yeah, like a hundred extra dollars times, or roughly, let's say there's four hundred, probably four hundred sixty two, last time I looked, it might be edging towards five, it's. You know, forty to forty six thousand, we get, if I increase it by a hundred, the only thing you gotta keep in mind is the supply and demand, if you increase it by a hundred, maybe. Your, your people might participate, so there's no way to know if it'll pan out exactly.
I, I, I got you, I'm just trying, yeah, is, is there, I, I, I like, forgive me, it might be it's an ignorant question, but is this a, a. A normalized practice for. School districts to cover the majority of the costs and the hundreds of thousands of dollars for athletic programs?
Um depending the district, if you go up to, some of them make the pay to play much lower, which means that the operating budget does take a lot more of it. We're one of the higher ones in the area.
Higher and, and we're like, what do you mean, and higher in what regard?
Like, we charge our parents pay.
Yeah.
And so we, we rely on parents for a larger chunk of the funding than many of our other districts that surround us.
Okay.
Which is why sometimes you hear like, we're the highest anywhere and, you know, why can't we be a little lower?
Yes.
And so we did try to adjust to that, you know, in the eleven and things like that, I was putting all of those things in there. This, uh, most of these scenarios, take that back out and leave it at two hundred, they don't charge them more, because even the two hundred has been kind of.
Yeah, and well, yeah, well, I think we just have to look at that and other things that are on the chopping block as, as well. Just to say that one particular thing isn't on the chopping block or needs to be adjusted, is not doing a due diligence here. So, I'm just, I'll, I'll leave that, that I'm not, just something I think we all should be thinking about. Um, all right, so the insurance, I, I, so like I said, I submitted another question, I don't know, maybe you can. Answer me verbally or don't have the data or whatnot, but the, um. Uh submitted a follow-up to my first insurance question, so on the packet, you know, I could have the packet here. Um I did chime in to the town council meeting the other evening or a week ago. Uh when the insurance agent came, I spoke to them about the uh upcoming twenty five, twenty six benefit year. For the eat chip and the costs, so in there, in his presentation, he signaled that there was roughly. Says nine, it's on the first page, nine to ten percent increase in the insurance, health insurance jump. Yet in the proposed budget, we had eighteen or almost nineteen percent increase. So just trying to determine how, and it was over, I know it was roughly whatever, one or one point one million increase in the original board of ed. Um budget increase versus if we went from that, I think it was maybe only about. Five or six hundred thousand increase if we went with the ten percent versus, you know, it was like a five hundred thousand dollar difference when I was doing the math the other day. So I'm just trying to determine where this lies from his presentation to how you got it on. The paper that you had presented to us, the such a large discrepancy.
I don't, I would have to look at what you're referencing to be able to say that, I guess you're probably looking at the locked-in presentation.
Yes, yes, that's right, yes.
There's various figures in there, and so, um, you know, the locked-in, it looks at your projected claims, um.
It's on page, uh, if you have the presentation or what, it's on page four here.
So I, I don't have it in front of me, but um.
I think it's the one you linked in the Q and A.
Yeah, see if I can find it. Cause why health insurance employees to make inflation jump? Plus treated patients on the rise here, nine to ten percent, he typed in there. Total rate increase passed on to employers for next renewal during the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six benefit years.
This'll, this'll take a minute, because I have to call and find it.
Oh, problem. I know you did reference that document to me, but to me. I know you did reference that document to me, but to me. Why even ask a follow-up? Is this just more or less provides historical data? It doesn't really provide me any. Data for, for the future besides that one little quick snippet there and then I also had asked for the town, what, whatever. Else the actual like numbers he provided to town and whatnot, and I, I didn't get any of that information either.
Yeah, I mean, I, the, the ways that I've tried to handle this, um, it's a complex thing. The number you're refer- referencing, I I've got to pull it up, but I've referenced a number that we are actually charged. That may just, it may be the board side, the one that is in our budget is our portion of the, of the amount that we are told we have to pay. I don't know what the discrepancy is, but I'll go look at it. I said in the last meeting that I would answer all the questions to date from that point to this meeting, and I did. These things are a little, these are things I can answer, but I have to find everything and pull it up. You can sit in silence while I do that if you want, it's just. Um, and I, you know, I offer opportunity, if you want to sit down and talk to me, we can go over everything. I have no problem spending as much time as you want on this, but it is not something that is like a one word answer. So what I'll try to do is find the, the presentation and pull it up and then try to make the two, you know, where the two numbers come together. But it is, um. It's really not like a very quick thing. That's why I was hoping maybe, you know, it's not my choice, but you can have a special meeting, you can call a special meeting, we can do them.
Well, I had asked you, uh, I think it was almost three weeks ago now. In the Q and A, it was one of the first questions about providing the information that was provided to the town to be supplied to us, and I still haven't received that.
That's correct.
I think, I mean, we're talking about over a one point one million of the dollar line item here. Uh, I think it needs to be out in the open on, on this number here and have the correct data to back it up.
And nobody's trying to hide anything. Uh, so let's put a, let's put a pin in that for right now and let's move on to the next question. We'll keep in mind.
The other line item that I have. The, uh, hold on, I was trying to find it. So on some of the, we'll have line items here, it says health, life and disability insurance. I'll have one line item. Then I'll go and then there'll be another line item for life insurance. There'll be another line item for disability insurance. So we have one line item for health, life and disability insurance. Why is there another additional line for life insurance and another additional line for disability insurance? Holding another hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars on top of the other line that I thought would include these other numbers.
This is one of the F A Q questions.
Now, this, this is just from their budget objective, uh.
I just have to get the line numbers where they come from.
And this is a, the line, here, here, the line numbers are two ten to eleven and two sixteen.
You know, I, so I have to, I'll have to go look at what you're asking, go look at each budget area and determine why, you know, what it's describing for each budget area.
All right.
Um, you know, that's what I would have to do with that, so.
Okay.
Um, if you list them, again, I can write this question down and I can post it as one on the F A Q.
Yeah, two ten, eleven and two sixteen.
Two ten, two eleven, and two sixteen, and the question is, um.
But we have two ten, just says health, life, disability insurance. But then all of a sudden, two eleven, there's just a separate line item for life insurance, which. I would think would be included in health, life and disability, and then there's two sixteen is disability insurance. And I, I would think that that would be included in line two ten with the health, life, disability insurance. I don't know if the, 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 the one line in two ten is just health. And life and disability aren't supposed to be the description of that two ten line item? I don't know.
Yeah, sometimes it's describing different groups, so. Um, but two ten, two eleven, two sixteen. Uh, one is, two ten is health, life, disability, two eleven is life insurance, two sixteen is disability insurance. Why are they separated?
Yes, thank you. Um, the other here, I, I don't know where it went. It was about the special education, because it's a five hundred and some odd. Um, increase from last year to this year. When I was looking to see. Um, a little more verbiage on the raise of. The fifty percent increase on that particular line item. Um, and how we're getting to that fifty, five hundred thousand dollar additional ask. Sorry, I can't find the line item.
I mean, most often special ed increases because, um. There's protection forward of what the out placements are going to cost and that number is then utilized. And it's a protection. And they usually, we usually will put in one additional outplacement just in case. We get someone beyond what we are expecting. It takes into account our reimbursement rate. Um, different places have different impacts. Uh, we have situations where, um, one may be three hundred thousand and is currently. In a hundred and sixty thousand zone and a change that may be coming would put it into the three hundred thousand dollar zone, um. And so those types of things happen. During the course of a year, and there are things like that coming up. But they have to do with mostly changes in the needs of transport or the needs of the out placements and. Um, addressing, you know, those I P's. Those are usual, or if funding goes down, we have to. Or if they change access cost numbers.
All right. And I'll, I'll, I'll stop right there. Come back to me, please. Just have to go second around. Thank you.
Uh, yeah. Thanks. And in, in all of the yellow sections of the budgets that you've got. The heading is reduction slash program adjustments. What, is that reductions or eliminations or what? What does that?
Well, it, it encompasses like, um, um. Curriculum writing, it's, we're gonna take that down by a large chunk, but I, I'll try to keep maybe a little bit of it around. You know, it's the stuff, um. You know, the, uh, that we, special education. We're gonna try, that, we're not wiping out all special education out placements. We're taking as much of it as we can that, you know, would put us down on a. We're taking more than we used to take and, you know, we would be budgeting very. I will call it aggressively because it, we might go over by doing this.
Are you basically holding it level and just not? Taking the increase that you originally asked for this.
Taking like the, the one that we have on hold and removing and we're taking it, but and it's risky because. Like whether it's one that came in or even one that increases by a hundred thousand, which is a possibility. Um, it's risky to do this, especially that is the most risky one. And so that's an example when I say adjustment, because we're not taking the entire outplacement budget out.
Right.
But we're taking a chunk to get to that number.
All right, so let me ask you on one that's a little bit easier than special ed. Special ed obviously is, uh, is the unicorn. Um, but, uh, like the, uh, budget number four, the first number four, tech ed initiative one to one. That's listed in the reduction program adjustment. What does that mean?
It's every, that's the whole Chromebook laptops.
So nobody's gonna have a, a school provided device.
Tech as initiative is literally the la- Chromebooks and the laptops we've been, um, updating for the. You know, the high school things, their laptops in ninth grade, sixth grade, um, Chromebooks and, um. And that rotation that we described and is part of that and it was presenting, we just scottled.
So there'd be no more devices provided?
Devices that are currently available would be the devices we have. Now, the only way, now what I would do in a situation like this. As I do in any of these situations is I try to find grants. And you know, if we are lucky enough to have some portion of that restored in a grant, I'll communicate to the board like I have in the past. Oh, we got a grant, you know, but.
Glad you mentioned that because that's grants is one of the questions I had written down. Why are, are you the only one that writes grants?
Um, I'm not the only one who writes grants. Um, I do write grants. Uh, other grants would be done by, say, like, we got forty thousand dollars in grants, I think it was last year, D E F grants. And various people write those. Um, we have lots of grants in the pipeline that are from other people, teachers. But the, the grants that are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars or whatever are the state and federal grants and. I handle, um, some of those, Director of People's Services handles some others of those, you know, we try to split it up because it's like. It's like doing your taxes. The forms aren't cognitively challenging, they're just tedious. So. Uh, I do some, Director of People's Services does some, various teachers and other staff do them.
Um, is there any possibility to ramp up? Grant writing to pay for some of these items? And you know, even if it's, I, I understand that the large hundred thousand dollar ones are, are big chunks, but chunks, but there's a lot of things on here. That are forty and fifty thousand dollars, things that, that could be, uh, encompassed with grants, I would think.
Yeah, we try. I mean, when something pops up, like one popped up for para educators for training and I, I, I went for it. You know, it's like only six grand, but it was pretty easy to get. I just went in, you know, filled out all the stuff and we got, right? If they pop up, we'll grab them and I think we're giving a pretty good job of grabbing any like whack a mole stuff that pops up here. The problem is, you're right, the little ones, well, there's quite a few little ones. And there's the Harper Foundation, for instance, you know. Uh, we work with Miss Valo and, uh, um, Harper Foundation, um, and, uh, United Way. We were able to get that grant that gave a lot of parents offsets for the, you know, their, um, their. School materials, buys and even sports. But they come up and then they go away, so we grab them when we can. Um, the ones that are harder to get as an ed tech initiative is hundreds of thousands. And that is, that's not coming up on the radar every day. You know, the hundreds of thousands ones existed mostly during COVID, but you don't see the ones that are like that for hundreds of thousands. So there'll be stuff that we get for I D E A that is this Bushell let offset money from the federal government. That'll be in the hundreds of thousands, but. But it's not meant for tech, you know what I mean? So the, that would be a hard one to get a grant for. What would probably happen is we would, if I could, or we could, we would get a partial. Chunk of that and try to keep the high schools laptops. You know, or, um, and that probably would be how we do it. It would be high school first because, you know. Laptops, we can get the money for that, we would try, and then if we could get more, we'd go down to the middle and then down. Um, once the P T O gave eighty thousand, eighty thousand? Uh, thirty thousand? Yeah, maybe I was being optimistic.
We don't raise that much.
The P T O once gave thirty thousand and that was an amazing year. We were able to fill some of the tech, put in with that. So, you know, yes, lots of grants, we go for as many as we can find. Um, the chances of having one that would take the entire tech initiative are very.
T I S, do they have one to one? Are they on one? Who's on one to one?
Uh, everybody north of Virchgrove.
So T I S.
Had a rotation for that, yeah.
What kind of savings approximate would we see if T I S wasn't on one to one? What, what is that?
Um, I have to break you down. You're looking at a hundred, hundred something thousand, you know, the overall thing is in a four hundred thousand, so you're going back. Hundred thousand, one hundred thousand.
A little over a hundred thousand dollars.
Probably in that zone, and I have to see how many, we stopped it for a year. I don't know how many are still there and what we'd be replacing at this point. Um, because it's a different arrangement down there. I call it ed tech initiative. I know people like to call it one to one. It was way back, there was this term coming out of COVID, one to one. I call it ed tech initiative because it's not quite one to one. It's, we buy the things for the schools. At the high school, it's one to one and the middle school is one to one, but you know, you get a little lower, they're sharing some of these things. But, um, still, um. And, and we haven't been replacing all of them, obviously, because, you know. So it's, uh, I, it's ed tech initiative, it's in the hundreds of thousands and we could probably. You know, if you cut off a portion of that, say you fund only the high school, you'd probably save a little. Now, I have to look at.
Um, I also noticed that, um, the two hundred thousand dollars for each chip. That's in the fourth scenario, isn't in the fifth scenario. Why would we not have that in there as well?
Well, it depends on what you want. You can mix and match however you see fit. Each of, that is a politically, um.
Well, we can't really mix and match, we don't know what's equal to what.
You can on the big items. For instance, each chip is one that, when I say mix and match, um, most of the sub items. You have to add up a lot of sub items to equal, um, you know, big dollars. Staff, it adds up very quickly. Most of the board of ed's budget is staff.
I mean, could I put that two hundred thousand dollars savings from each chip? And, and save those four teachers? Cause then we average four teachers at fifty thousand dollars.
Well, they don't, they're a little bit more than fifty thousand. Uh, the two hundred thousand from each of, the reason that we use that, uh, the reason it's on there kind of limited manner is that. It's, um, not, it's not, it's something that may, the town may not agree with us. So it requires talking to the town. It's taking more from the reserve than, than, you know.
Normal.
Than normal, than what we said. It's, it's not a easy one, and not that any of it's easy. That one will require some conversations and meetings and. You know, it, it is a, uh, I, I don't want to use the word political. It's, it's more like it's. If, if anybody remembers the last time we did that, it created, there was some conversations about it.
How long ago was that?
Was that, was that a year ago? There was, so it's not, it's one of those ones that. Um, requires some, some running the bases to achieve and so it's, um, you have to decide whether you feel like that's worth what you wanted to do there. You know, if you want me to pursue that, it's running some bases.
And my last question, inter-district tuition. In your budget that you have. You're, you're not assuming any reimbursement from the state.
I believe that the.
Isn't it cap, isn't the tuition capped at like fifty-eight percent?
Well, that's this year. That doesn't, I don't think that, we don't know what it will be next.
It doesn't historically say that.
It really depends. I mean, you really don't, you really don't know.
I mean, if we, if we just cap it. If we just do the same increase that we did last year, which was six percent, there's a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars there in the inter-district tuition.
Well, let me see what we have, you know, um, it's just that these kind of things are very, very difficult to predict. And, and what, you get a, you know, you get a break maybe in a year. That does not always translate. The other thing that happens is they can change. What the state does is usually shift the, the play, the pieces around. So you might get a little something here, but then, and you might have your threshold for excess cost change. Um, or you might have something else, you know, adjust. For instance, there are some, we're losing some money, as you noted in a. It goes either federal or state, we're going down. We have less grant money, so there's less money here, maybe you get some there. But it, it's not something that I think we feel confident enough to say we're sure that's happening next year. We're also gonna be a little lower on, um, on the open choice stuff. So there's stuff going down, probably will balance out, wanting to be conservative.
Just wondering what's different than other towns, because other towns, when I look at their budget, they're confident in saying that it's similar to what was done last year. When I look at their budgets and their inter-district tuition. Um, so you know, I just, I don't know what they're doing differently or what they're seeing differently than what we are. But they're confident enough to say that it's not going up significantly, that they can, they can hold their numbers.
Well, I think that's, um. So, uh, inter-district tuition, I think, uh. For fifty, uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, we have two hundred and thirty thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, we budgeted. Three hundred and fourteen thousand, so the number I'm looking at, we do have an adjustment. For five, six, it's, it's down to eighty-four thousand, so it might be, you know, other lines mixed, what you're looking at. I have to know the exact one. That line.
I'm looking at page thirty-four or forty-six in the inter-district tuition information in the budget book. That's what I'm looking at. That shows all the, uh, all the correct schools and, and how many students we had and what the tuition rates are and. And what the projection is, it's a hundred and eighty-four to three hundred and twelve. And we pay a hundred and eighty-four thousand this year. For forty-six students and the projection is forty-four students next year at three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, so. The student cost for the projection of six thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars for Discovery Academy. Compared to last year. Compared to last year's budget book. Uh, what the ask was and what the actual was, the ask for last year's budget book was the same, six thousand seven hundred fifteen. And here in this year's budget book, the actual for that cost for tuition is three thousand six hundred seventy four, so we got that reimbursement. Um, so, and you know. I look at at other towns and, you know, they specifically talk to this in their budget that they're expecting a very same or similar number, but. You know, we we jump up. With less kids and significantly more, more cost. And they're assuming.
Well, I don't, I really can't comment on what other towns do, I know that that we typically reach out to the organization and ask them. What they intend on charging. So, um. You know, that that is what the office does, and then they come up with these numbers because they're getting, usually they're doing the hard call, you know. Cold calls to find out if things are going to change. I really can't comment on what someone else is doing, I mean, if you want me to compare what we are doing to other districts. Uh, I definitely can.
I I know it's not apples to apples, but.
Really, it really isn't apples to apples, but what I can do is.
I know it's not apples to apples, is what I said, I know it's not, but we are, we are sending them to the same schools and tuitions. Are the same and.
But this is, we we do reach out to these groups and say, you know, what do we expect this to be, and they base the numbers on the outreach, you know. That they get when they, when they make contact with them. So, I don't know, I mean, I think sometimes people will say a lot of things during a budget session to avoid maybe people going at. They take chances because they don't want um staff reductions, so they might say. You know, hey, we're we're gonna have extra money here, so don't worry about it, because they don't want to cut staff, and then they deal with it in the following year. Um, I really, I don't know, I don't know which districts, I don't know which things we're referring to, I can try to break that apart, um. If we want, I know that these guys, that they do their, they do a thorough job of trying to determine what we're gonna get. That is what they determined when they reached out.
So what happens with?
I can say, you know, about them, and they're not all reimbursable, um.
Yeah, let's assume that, you know. If that three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for for the interdistrict tuition gets approved. And it comes back. That we're paying. Little more than half of that, similar to what we paid this year, hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. Where does that money roll over into? Where does it go? Does it, does it leave that line item and go to another line item?
It would, it would be like, as we get to the end of the year, you know, if we're taking risks, say, and um. We're eliminating, um. Like, you know, the paras and things like that. Then if we overrun those lines, or if we overrun any of these other tuition lines, because we are not. Budgeting for that additional outplacement, then if you have money in this line, it offsets it.
So that, does it actually move, or do you just show the line as positive?
We here don't, we don't move it here, so you can see, so it doesn't mask what happened in the line, we actually keep everything where it is. And if you think about it, at the end of our years, we really have a very small percentage of the budget left. So these these over unders are typically coming. You know, they're happening, and they're happening fairly effectively, because we don't really have a large percentage of our budget left. You know, but I can say, I know they do really, you know, they do a lot of hard work to try to determine what those numbers are, and they do cold calls. And and that's why they choose the numbers they do.
Thanks.
Dr. Will, and I just have one, uh, I'm looking at option four. There is. A line in there that essentially said. For all clubs and. There you go, all clubs and advisors, eliminate all clubs and advisors. Does that mean throughout all of the schools, all of the clubs, with all?
Yep.
And.
It'll be all the stuff.
Again, just in in not asking for a specific number, uh, order of magnitude, what is that?
Um, here, hold on.
Jay, your eyebrows.
Can you repeat that? I didn't hear it, sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that, Dana, I'll speak up. I I'm looking in option for the 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 top option for. Under reductions and program adjustments, there's a line that says eliminate uh, all clubs. All clubs and advisors, my question to Dr. Willet was. Does that mean throughout, you know, exactly what it says, does that mean all of the clubs and advisors for all of the schools? Yearbook club, yearbook, DECA, all of those, and then what? From an order of magnitude, uh, that value look like?
So eliminating all clubs and advisors is much broader than you might think it is.
Sounds huge.
Yeah, it's about. Um, one hundred thirty thousand. Wait, but you're thinking this is everything, and all advisors.
So it's literally.
There were, there are all the clubs and activities and things you see, um. Eliminate pay to participate, clubs and advisors would be a pretty big chunk. It would be a large chunk to limit, but it's more than what you think it is, because it's deceptive. When you go into the contract under Article thirty eight, everything we.
Which contract?
A teacher's contract, I think it's Article thirty eight, if you look at all the plays. All the activities, this is every other stipend type of thing that you have to get to that number, so that's. That's a lot of things. Yeah, it's not, it is not a, it's not maybe what you might be thinking, like, oh, model U N, it's.
Uh, and and I, no, I mean, I understand.
So they're plays, you know, a play would be an example, because that's done by an advisor, that's all under those areas.
Uh, thank you, I I just want to make sure that that was everything, that that was not a subset.
Okay, Jen, I'll hand off to you then.
Dr. Will, in option. Definitely, I think, an option number four, maybe some others. We have to eliminate the library coordinator that was in the proposed budget. My understanding was that, I believe that's the six thousand dollar stipend we were talking about, and that that was. Deemed pretty necessary, um, for N E S.
It was, uh, it was one of the things that N E S recommended, um. You know, any, if, and all I can really say is that in order to reach, you know, there were priorities set, and in every scenario. Priorities were set, in that scenario, that wasn't a priority, so I have to take what wasn't a priority for the option or scenario.
And Dr. Will, this is clarification, I mean, we recognize that you put together these scenarios based on.
Yeah.
Oh, criteria, we said it's not, so that that's completely understood.
Um, okay, and then, thank you, Brian, for asking of the nurses, I was gonna ask about that too. So, again, just to clarify, and you know. For, I guess, the public's understanding of this, my understanding is that at T I S. There's, yes, there's two nurses sitting there, and then this physician that they were looking for, but of those two nurses, one of the nurses is more like a district. Or district head nurse, correct? So that person is also dealing with, you know, administrative things, whatnot, so. We're keeping that position there, plus the L P N that's there. And it's this unsealed position.
Unsealed L P N.
Okay. Um. And then where it says, you know, the priorities, again, just for clarification, when we say two full-time S R Os. Currently, we have two part-time S R Os posted in our, in our budget, so we really need. Be changing that to a full time, and then we'd be adding one additional S R O.
No, this, these two, this is saying, in your budget, you have two.
But in this year's, in this year's current budget, in the twenty four.
You have the ability to hire, uh, in this full-time budget, you have two. This was maintaining two S R O.
Two part-time.
No, you have a hundred, the the budget, the S P B for next year, had a hundred fifty thousand. Which is two full-time S R Os. And if you want to protect those in the budget, that's what that scenario does, is it keeps those in the budget. And will something up.
So what I'm saying is, in the full year twenty four, twenty five budget, the current budget we're already in.
You have enough.
We have, we have enough for one, so we're really just adding a dollar amount for another one for. The twenty five, twenty six.
You you are keeping.
Right.
The two, the hundred fifty. You have a, that eleven point one percent budget. Is, okay, it has in it, so what you've done with these scenarios is you're saying, let me keep this. You're keeping the two S R Os.
Just for, I think, the question's there, ignore the eleven percent. If we looked at the budget that we're operating under right now.
Our current budget.
Current budget, not what we have, the one we're, yes. How many S R Os are in that?
It was, it's, it was designed under having two twenty-four hour ones.
The two part-time, essentially.
Right, but instead of two part-time.
So this one here. Says two full time.
Right.
So the delta is.
One.
One full time.
That's why it doesn't show up in the personnel changes, I know, I'm just make, again, making.
Reallocated, I think it's seventy seven thousand every year. We would be putting a hundred fifty thousand in, and with that hundred fifty, you can hire two.
Fair.
And you have seventy seven thousand this year. What allows you to hire two full times is a change in contract.
Yep.
To seventy seven this year, a hundred fifty in there.
That's your point.
Seventy five thousand additional.
Yeah, I think it's ever since. Yes.
Keep the existing in the addition.
Exactly. Um. Okay, and then. Um. Tony asked about the one to one. You know, the four paras, the open positions, okay, so I guess I'll just say this right now. I think what I'm going to be asking that we maybe take a look at next round or the round after that. Is budget option four.
With, there's two fours, can we just have like a four, maybe a four A?
Can you make that newest one fine?
Yeah, no, can you make the?
No, I'm sorry, let you do it.
Okay, so what I'm thinking.
So you, so you going on four or five?
Four.
Okay.
What I'm thinking is four. But. What I'd like to keep in the budget. So the green box would also add the social worker. The proposed additional social worker. Like Jade and I have a lot of data on. What we should be operating with within within our schools. Um, I have the numbers that were given. What I found is that the recommended amount of metal per student for a guidance counselor is two hundred and fifty. Per student for a psychologist is every five hundred students. And for a social worker is every two hundred and fifty students. We are, we basically miss that at pretty much every school, I think we maybe attain that at the high school with guidance counselors. Um, based on our numbers, so we are missing those recommendations that come from the American School Counselor Association, the National Association of Psychologists. And the National Association of Social Workers, so, you know, we have, I think, this. Proposed budget that we looked at, which I've already said, I believe in strongly everything that Dr. Willis put into that budget. Um, but there's definitely a focus there on intervention and safety. And I think, and those were also two of our goals, let me discuss them. The importance is also the connection between the two, so I'm not necessarily interested in security for our schools, what I'm interested in are safe schools. And so there's a lot, security is definitely a piece of that, and I'm all for security. Um, but the other piece of that is the mental health piece, and like Jane, again, I've done a lot of data on that, and, you know, the most. Um, the largest tragedies, when you boil down to it, is not simply the security of the school, but it is. The mental health aspects as well, and what we can offer, what we should be offering our students, we are missing that mark. So I think we need to be aware that. We're being told that every single year, so if we're worried about an event happening. The question is not simply going to be about security, there's going to be a question there about mental health. Um, so I would point you to the Secret Service provided guidance on this, there's a lot of guidance of the, on this, um, online. I can point you to some things, I'm sure you have too, but I feel very strongly that we're. We're going to get ourselves in trouble if we keep ignoring this need, so I would add that social worker back, and I mean both point three and the, and the one. Full time, um, I would also want to keep one-to-one tech. Um, clearly, that is an initiative I believe in, not only is it essential for. Ninety percent of the country has one-to-one technology in their high schools. Um, I didn't do a data search on the rest, but I'm sure that there's a high percentage for middle school, and then I'm sure we trickle down. Um, but not only would it set our district behind, would it set our children back for competitiveness to college. Um, but it also would be. It would be, it would be, we'd be going backwards on a, on a large investment we made, and we made an investment, not mon, not just monetarily, but also in time. So I can't even imagine asking our staff to go backwards and now try to take everything that they've done to make. Technology, to make Google Classroom and everything that these children do with technology and reverse that back to the way it was before. And the world is only going to continue to ramp up in technology, so it will be something we take away and we put back, so again, we'd be wasting money, in my opinion. Uh, um, I also would add back the clubs and advisors, um, and I would add back. And I would add the media coordinator, because it was pretty clear to me that that was important for the N E S. Require, um, requirements, and it's a six thousand dollar stipend.
Just, and your social worker, one-to-one technology.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak for the great son to let everybody know what I was thinking, and other people might have their things as well, but this is kind of what I was trying to grab at from. Things people were talking about and from was on the list, so I would add, add two, option four, the social worker. I would add back one-to-one tech, I would add back clubs and advisors, I would add back the media coordinator. Um, I would remove the four paras.
Dr. Will, don't make permanent changes to the.
Yeah.
No, I'm not, I just, uh, um.
I have it written down, if the group decides to do that, I can totally.
We'll, we'll come back around.
I just.
Jen, can you repeat the, can you repeat the para thing you just said, please, Jen?
I was going to agree with the removal of the four open para positions. So I was gonna do that from option four. And then, um, you know, if the group wanted to start diving into this. You know, I'd be willing to discuss some of the other option five reductions that I just don't have enough money, uh, I don't have enough information on yet, like. Some of the monitors, some of the the office equipment, the new Zella. Um, I'd be interested in, you know, what you came back with on that interdistrict tuition that that Bill asked for. And, you know, if we had to look at. You know, I I'd want to understand how T I S currently utilizes their technology, and, you know. Perhaps if we were to look for a grant to help offset, maybe put it towards there, but I don't believe we should be touching the Chromebooks for, um, the middle school and the high school.
Materials.
That's what I just said, I'd be, I I would want to know how they're utilizing that and how important that is to their curriculum and what they're currently doing. And if we could find a grant to offset that, or maybe we can, you know, roll down some of the things that we have in the middle school, again, I would, we would need more information on that, but. Just looking at it, just to give you a heads up where I'm at. That's what I'm thinking, I'm obviously not okay with eliminating sports and clubs or four teachers or. Um. Or one-to-one tech or et cetera, et cetera. I'm gonna stop, sorry, I didn't mean to kind of go that much off limits.
Katie.
Um. Can you? Um. I feel like the, the great thing about being almost last, but everybody does, so I'm like, they can jump around here, so thank you for all these really good questions about that, but. What is, what's new Zella?
It's, uh, basically, think from news, but what it can do is customize the information to the variety of reading levels very quickly. When, I don't know, I forget who walked around for T I S and did like the. The instruction rounds, one of the reasons they can differentiate, or schools can differentiate the way they do, is because if you have twenty-five different kids. You could generate stuff at different reading levels, like very quick.
Okay.
Versus if you don't have a product like that, you have to go try to do that, the human being has to try to change things.
Right.
And provide that for many different, you know, levels of kids, so those things are integral to that. That, what you watched, that software, what is necessary to allow them to do what we are seeing. That's why the instructional rounds is so important, because it's hard to describe that, you have to see.
And what are you able to sort of offhand? Say what total of these eliminations would be?
Yeah, um, I can, anyone.
I can pose it in the questions later, I don't want to get too.
Yeah, I need, and, and definitely can, um.
Really, that's okay, I'll just put it in there, and then I just wanted to know, um, what is special ed red cat equipment?
It's uh, audiological.
That's all I.
Dana?
Oh, shoot, hang on. Sorry, um. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Cause I have earbuds in.
Yes, you can.
And you clearly heard my dogs, because someone just came in through the front door. I do apologize. Um, I do have a couple of questions, and as Katie said, it's kind of nice being what the fifth or sixth person going, because. You can check several things off the list. Um. I want to just go back to Jane's initial question, social worker versus psychologist. We're missing them at the TMS level. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So. Alright, so, and going back to what Jen was saying about intervention and safety. It's paramount that we ensure that we have the social workers and psychologists. In the schools, so, um, hang on one second. My apologies, I put myself on mute, because there was, the kids are in here. Um. So when it says an option for negative one, social worker. Where is that coming from? Or is that just not adding it in?
Well, what you talking option four, for instance?
Option four in the pink.
Those, what I tried to do is when you see reduction to current budget, you know, that's the nurse, but if you go north of that, those are all things that were asked for. In the, um, superintendent's proposed budget, so it's taking those out because those were not the must haves.
Okay, so we currently have a social worker in three out of four schools. And we asked for one to get into the fourth school and that's saying we're not going to put it in the fourth school. Is that correct?
Right, in the superintendent's proposed budget, one was asked for, for the, for the middle school and possibly to use for the six twelve general population. And that would not happen under option four. And what would be prioritized under option four are the SROs, the MTSs.
So to reduction from the superintendent's proposed budget.
Un- understood, which in the superintendent's proposed budget, that would be a social worker, potentially a TMS, correct?
That would be the one that was asked for, for TMS, yeah, in the SPV. Yes.
Okay, so. Um, I think that's definitely something that we need to be, we need to consider, because. The middle school, so with all. Nobody ever says they want to go back to middle school, right? They say they missed the high school days, they missed their. Their elementary days, but middle school is like the most, you know, the biggest impact. Uh, in growth as well as educational aspects. So having that, that. Social worker at the middle school level is something that I'm concerned about eliminating. Um. Tony, thank you for, uh, talking about clubs and advisors. That was one that was pop, popped up on me. Um, when in option four, where you wrote library books. I'm sorry, I'm scrolling on you guys, but, and then scrolling back to, uh, all library books. Is that future fulfillment, replenishment? What is that?
That's, we're not, we're not, it's not buying any additional library books. So take out all the budget items. If it's all, it's. All library budgets would be zero.
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
All, all library budgets would be zeroed out.
Okay, so we just be sustaining what we have.
Yeah, whatever's in there now would stay in there, but we would not be buying anything additional for the libraries.
And typically, what we find, it's very difficult, once you remove it from the budget, to get it back into the budget, correct?
Yeah, I, cause you're, then you're climbing up. Everything then becomes part of the percent that we have to ask for. That is true.
Alright, so we talk a lot about literacy and. Um. I don't know, that's a little bit concerning. I know it's probably not in everybody's high priority list, but. Having my kids nose in a book versus in a Kindle or on a iPad or a screen is. Is something that I think all of our kids need to be. Um, flourishing and reading and, um, those kind of things. But I just wanted to make sure. What's the dollar amount when it comes to library books, new books, removing that? What does that impact the budget at?
Seven twenty. Six four two. Let's say two periodicals and books is another forty-nine hundred. So.
Sorry, what'd you say, Dr. Willet?
The, the line you're talking, there, there are a number of different lines for library and it would be all of them. So I adding them all up. I would have to add them all up and get a full number, but if you give me a minute, I'll pull that. You know, it would be everything that they get though, so. I don't need a minute. I can get numbers, but I have to look everything up.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we have that on our.
You're not talking a tremendous amount of money, but had estimate, you're looking at. A couple thousand at the highest possible thing. It's usually five hundred bucks or so for school, maybe a couple thousand. I have to look at the exact number though.
Go ahead.
For the, uh, appendix here, it says library books ninety-seven twenty. Periodicals and books, another forty-nine hundred. And then I don't know if professional books are included in that. That's another thirty-six thirty. So my calculations are almost seventeen thousand dollars.
Right, but, um, what we would be reducing.
We have library books.
So library, uh.
Nine thousand seven twenty.
All library purchases, this would be ten thousand dollars for books specifically. That reduction would be ten thousand. It's not periodic. It's all library books.
Yeah, nine thousand seven.
So you're looking at, and if you, there's a couple of anecdotal other places. So the total amount used for this is ten thousand one hundred.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Willet. Thank you, Dr. Willet.
Okay, I know it's weird, the periodic is different.
Okay, um, now my other question that I had. Now I want to go to option now, budget option five. Um, on the left column, it says TMS athletics. But then in the right column, it says pay-to-play TMS, pay-to-play TMS revenue. Can you expl-? I'm sorry?
I duplicated that. Basically, that is all part of the same pay-to-play. Um, all of that stuff offsets. Those two things, revenue offsets. Um, what we pay, I just accidentally copied the revenue piece in here.
Okay, so my question, my question would is then, TMS athletics is not eliminated. We're just moving it to.
I mean, there is. Just copy the revenue lines in. You know, so basically you just take those out and disregard. That's all athletics. It cuts TMS athletics.
So cut TMS athletics totally, one hundred percent.
It was an accidentally copy paste that the revenue lines into. That's what I did, so.
So in, in, in budget five, zero TMS athletic programs.
Picks out the TMS.
And, and that equates to what dollar figure?
So, sorry. Athletics, it's, uh, thirty plus. It's about forty thousand to, to, it's about, it's thirty thousand, but, um. We also cut, uh, and it, what we did for athletics was, you know, you have been having parents pay for admission to games too. So in addition to that, we also. Took that and added it back. So it's about.
Okay.
You don't get any break on any tickets. You don't get any break on paid participation games.
Alright. Um, and then my last question. Because like I said, many people asked my question, so it's kind of nice going, second to last. Um, Lexia at BGP, which was on. The original budget option four. I believe it's like the seventh one down. Um, is that eliminating Lexia altogether, or that's eliminating additional Lexia? Teaching, training programs, um.
Birch Grove Lexia is nine thousand. That's primarily what goes away, because we don't have, it's not, we've been whittling away at that for a while. This is Birch Grove's life.
Right, so, but that's, you'll be getting rid of the actual subscription, is that correct?
Right, the dollar amount is nine thousand.
Okay, and so, but Lexia focuses on phonics. And ELA. With those, with our students.
One of the programs we utilize for, for our ELA program. Exactly.
It's, it's utilized in conjunction with our ELA and our reading program, correct? What you're saying?
Yep.
Okay, and that's nine thousand dollars? So that's, that's pennies on the dollar to mitigate.
That's what I'm saying is when you go to programs, you're dealing with nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, things like that.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, so some, looking at Lexia, even at the, at the primary level, we talk a lot about. Our ELA and our, and our strength in reading, um, books in hand, computers in hand. Um, nine thousand dollars seems almost like pennies on the dollar to ensure that we have a support, another, another opportunity of. Increasing and impacting our, our youngest learners' foundation of, uh, increasing those learn, those reading skills. Um, especially, you know, it makes it almost like a video game, you know, for their, for our young learners. Um, I just, I didn't know if that was continued subscription, or I know that at a time we had. Additional training for different programs. So I don't know if that was additional training for the programs, or that's the actual subscription to the programs, or our kids can have access to that.
It's, it's the entire BGP's Lexia program and everything that goes with that.
Which means as of next year, the kids will not be able to log into Lexia and do, do that extra sidebar curriculum. Correct?
Yeah, that is right.
Okay, alright, and then we've, we already have reflex taken out at certain levels, also at the BGP, BGP level, correct? Currently.
Um, I'm not.
Not on the budget, but I mean, it's available now at this point in time. Is reflex available?
But that reflex isn't the same as Lexia.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that these are different programs for mathematics and ELA. For our younger students to actually have a video game type thing to help them with their core fundamentals of their curriculum.
Yeah, yes.
So that's something that we've already lost. Okay, that's, that's, that's my questions for now. I'll defer to Dan and the rest of the group. I think Dan hasn't gone yet, so. I'll stop.
Danny, still there?
I am, yes, thank you. Um, sorry for my voice. I've got a little bit of this fluke going on, but, um. I do appreciate going last. Most of my questions here were answered, but, um, I just want to clarify very quickly, um. When I'm seeing these, uh, personnel considerations as far as staff reductions going on, um. Am I, is it right to say that, um? The only actual staff, um, that we would be losing is the point seven FTE. The nurse is all, all of the other reductions. That's, these are new positions that were added to the new budget. I- is that right?
Four, yeah, four scenario, four, I think you're referencing, but those scenarios, um, schema scenario, whatever you want to call them. One, two, three, and four. I was given instructions about, you know, what, what had the must haves and that generally you were doing level service.
Okay.
Can describe that. So in those scenarios, you're, you're not losing, except for four. No current staff reductions, but option five, to go lower than that, six point seven seven, does go to staff reductions.
Okay, thank you. That, that's what I wanted to clarify. Um, that, that's really it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody. Wonderful question. So we're going to get started on round two. Uh, but as we do, I, I just want to plant this, the thought in your head and, and just kind of. Get your thoughts as you're going through your, your round two of comments and questions. So if I listen to and I look at my notes, a lot of our. A lot of our conversation, a lot of our, our concerns are, are centering around. The original, uh, budget option four. And plus or minus, how that affects one way or the other, the, the perks, the bonuses. So in your conversation, then in your, your statements. I'd like to understand what would have to be modified to option four to make it palatable to you as an individual. So that being said, Jayden, you ready to go?
I am ready. Right, it's funny, they mentioned it's nice to go at the end. Also nice sometimes to go at the beginning, because then you got a lot of questions from your questions. So it's, it's very helpful, so. Um, I'll start with this is my, I guess, non-negotiable, you know, on, on Jayden's plate. Uh, and Jen sort of hit on a lot of, a lot of the things that, uh, you know. I would like to keep or add to, excuse me, option four. And the first thing on that list is one social worker. And it's to me, one is still not enough. I think Jen nailed it head. We are in an age where. I am in full agreement with the idea of adding S R, full-time SROs to our buildings, security. And whatever, I, I, if we could add all the security in the world to our buildings, I would absolutely be in favor of that. So what? Oh, sorry, Dr. Will. So a- as we go through specifically this round, you asked, can we? Let, let's take notes of what, whether, what those go up and down.
Yeah, could you do in a way that we just see what we're putting in and taking out, so that everybody can see what they agree with and what they don't?
What if he says he wants to act something, I say I want to keep it?
That's, that's. It'll help us visualize.
I just want to capture it all, as we're talking.
Yeah.
And we'll capture, he says plus.
Right.
Excuse me? And we can take those notes down. It's who wants what, so we can see what, what the amalgamation is what we.
So, um, we're starting with option number four, right?
So maybe what I would have in JR in green, maybe Brian has B, um, T in red, something like that, to differentiate between. If that's something we would keep.
We're differentiating.
Right, something like that or whatever. Well, meaning, meaning if, if that's something you want to eliminate versus I want to keep, right? How do we differentiate? I don't know, I'm not an Excel person here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best here to capture everything.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Option four, starting with option four. Um, discussing option four, is that right?
Yeah, and I'm going to go through, you know, it's, it's not going to be so black and white as to. But I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you what I would like to keep, but there's some, I got some stuff to say here as well, so.
Okay.
Um, so I do appreciate keeping it. I'm a visual learner, so anything you can do to put it up somewhere, I appreciate it. Um, so the first thing on this list, if we're ready to continue here, um, would absolutely be that social worker. I'm still, you know, to be honest with you, uh, before this, in, in, and shame on me, before this budget cycle, um. You know, the importance of social workers was not something that. I personally have addressed enough, and especially we as a board, I don't think I've addressed nearly enough over the last three and a half years I've been on this board. Never mind the last decade that, um, you know. Um, so the social worker, the impact of that, I mean, just last Friday, for example, just, just to put it into perspective as to what social workers do. Never mind the fact that, that they're going to have, I mean, five hundred kids on their, on their, on their docket here. Just last Friday. There was a situation at, at my, at my work where as soon as I got into the office, I received a phone call as soon as I got here. And it was the social worker from the school, one of several in the school. And that social worker was communicating to me from DCF. And so DCF had no clue this child was in our, our immediate care after school. They, they, there was no way of them knowing, okay, this is the contact we need to communicate with. Which is why the social worker sort of is that sort of middle person to make sure, hey, DCF, I'm contacting social worker. I need this communication to get out to every possible person that this child's in their care. And this, this child, um, something changed as of that morning. That caused, uh, the care of that child to be no longer in the hands of their direct parent. There was no way of DCF getting me that information without that social worker being there. And why is that? There's just a lot of roadblocks in the way to knowing where, who that child is in, you know, who that child's with after school ends. And so, eh, I get this call saying, hey, we need you to, you know, make this change, that change, that change, okay? We need documentation. DC, I contact DCF directly, we get approval to get documentation, that documentation comes through email. We, 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 we print it, it's now in the file. Um, and now, God forbid something were to happen, we've got direct documentation because of that interaction between myself. The social worker and DCF. And so that, that trio was necessary in order to. To keep this child safe. And so it's, it's, I don't know the numbers in, in Tom and Dr. Willet in terms of. How many DCF cases there are and whatnot relative to obviously a town like Manchester, different demographics, different, different, you know, funding levels, different, uh, different, a lot of things. Um, but again, even if it's one child that we're keeping safe, I, I can't see the negative to that. Um, but again, even if it's one child that we're keeping safe, I, I can't see the negative to that. And so, you know, I would love more social workers than just the one, uh, but in the, in the, sort of going on Brian's point, we do have a goal on our, on our goal sheet here, um, you know, to keep, to keep a, a, a fiscally responsible, uh, budget. Um, and so, I am, I, there's no, there's no, my, my negotiable starts with the social worker. We, I'm in favor of keeping that one social worker. Um, the one-to-one tech, I can't remember who meant it, Jen, I think it was, sorry to point that to you, I think it was, it was you, um, mentioning, you know, I can't, I can't get behind, as we progress forward, I mean, every single person at this, at, at our chamber, in our chambers right now has a computer in order to do our jobs at this table. It would be, number one, hypocritical of us to say, well, students that are going to be doing this, this role, students that are gonna be doing his role in twenty, thirty years, well, you're not gonna learn on the technology that you're gonna need for that, it's all right, no, you know, I didn't mean it like, you know, so far out, but, but, you know, he's a well-qualified superintendent that has a, you know, a lot on his plate, that you require this technology, you require, um, the computers, you require this staff, which we don't do, I'm gonna be honest with you, again, it's hard to sugarcoat it, we still don't do a good enough job at, at providing, and so, um, so the one-to-one tech, another non-negotiable for, for me, um, adding on to option four. Tony, I appreciate you mentioning, uh, the clubs and advisors, uh, line, because, and that's why my eyes sort of shot up. Um, if Mrs. Bridge was in here, you know, the first person I think of is Mrs. Bridge, why? Because, I mean, the impact personally on my life. But then we've got two student reps, who, one of them is doing DECA right now, I, I believe the other's taking a course, you know, with the teacher that is paid a stipend after school to help a lot of these other kids get these different experiences. I, co-curriculars, and I, and I, I started typing it, you know, somewhere over here, because it, it, it just sort of, I'm not gonna lie to you, it shocked me when it said all clubs and advisors stipends. I mean, I, I must have missed it, I don't know what, but I don't think I, I, I could, I could support anything even remotely to that, not even half, not even a third, not even an eighth, not, nothing. And so, I would add all clubs back, put the clubs back into, um, the budget, I can slow down if needed.
I'm just, I'm setting up some of the pieces here, so you wanted to keep the social worker?
Keep the so, add the social worker.
Add the social worker currently to the budget that exists.
The number four, yep. Um, keep the one-to-one tech. Sorry, I should talk less.
No, uh, you're keeping the.
You're just trying to listen to, uh, you know. Everywhere.
Yeah, so you've added, you're, you're, you know, you're adding back, this, you're adding the one-to-one tech back.
Adding the one-to-one tech.
You're, you're keeping the, the SROs, the MCSS, the pathways, and you're adding a social worker, and you're adding, um, one-to-one.
Bingo, and, and, and I don't know if you mentioned the pathways, keeping the pathways.
And that's already in there.
Yep, and so, um, clubs and advisors, that would absolutely, I, it, it, I can't, yeah, it's coming back, um. Although I do have a couple of questions now, and so, I'm gonna interrupt my, what I would like to add back real quick, just, just to clarify a few things. When it says, special, uh, let me go to it here, so I don't screw this up here. When it says, uh, four point oh, four paraeducators in parentheses, SE, I assume that stands for special education. Years, in years past, and, and so, I'm confused why it's on here, if what I'm saying is true. In years past, I've heard you mention that we've gotta stay in compliance, although they're not filled, there's a sense of, there's a standard that Connecticut has set for us, that we have to stay in compliance with. Can you explain why the, they would be on here?
Because they've come up in a number of board meetings, says, these are open positions, why don't you reduce them? So, operationally, it makes it incredibly difficult, but that's not the conversation we're having. These are, are these reflect things you have talked about everywhere, from sports to the open paras, reflects everything you've talked about.
Yeah.
We would have to outsource services, we would have to overrun the consulting line, or use the consulting line, we would have to reach out to area resks. We would have to, we have to fulfill the IEPs.
Right.
Um, that actually could result in, you know, hiring some other kind of staff and offsetting it with something else. The goal is, and, and we have never gone above budget, you know, um, in, I don't know, all the decades, you know, when I've been here, I imagine before that. So, the, you know, we would be getting closer and closer to the line with everything I'm doing. And so, we would absolutely have to still do that, we're just not doing it with these four positions, we're going to have to do it in some other line, it'll overrun the line.
And off the top of your head, do you know what that would look like, what that would be?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're overrunning the line by, I mean, I can, it takes me minutes to look it up, but.
That's okay.
A hundred thousand.
Gotcha, it, it, more so, not necessarily, well, the, the cost is, is, is absolutely a piece of my question. The other piece is, again, just sort of being curious, if it's not para professional, who is, what, what, what role, who, who does that now follow?
Give an example, we subcontract people through an agency now, we would either try to do it through a RESC or something and, and still offset another line. Um, there are complications with that, not everybody feels like the people are doing the same thing that a full para would do, frustrates the current staff. They also challenge it as a workforce issue, I'm saying, taking away their, their work. Um, and, um, who is that going to be? It's, it's anyone in these agencies that they would then say they could make it available to us.
Gotcha.
And they may or may not have the same kind of training, but they're somebody willing to do the work.
Gotcha.
You do pay more for them.
So, for, for four paras, we, we'd likely get one, two of these, or one.
We get as many as we have to to cover the IEPs, and then we, you know.
So the cost could end up being almost more, potentially, and correct me if I'm wrong, more than what the paras, sorry?
Okay.
Gotcha, 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 no, more.
And I can tell you exactly what that para, you know, and when you do eliminate positions, you, there, there's a little bit of um, money you're not bringing in, you're not bringing in their contributions. So the paras, um, in this case would add up to eighty-four thousand, eighty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine, twenty-eight.
Gotcha. Okay.
Now, you're gonna probably pay that somewhere in consulting or whatever to cover.
Okay.
Some line will have to be over, you know?
All right, I think that's an extensive conversation that could be had, you know, i- 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 it's not, this is, I'll, I'll, I'll skip by, I'll skip by the para educator, um, um, discussion for now, although I know others wanna add it back in, so I'm, I'm happy to continue that conversation, I just wanna continue on the things that were off the top of my head, um, to keep going. Another question I had, um, off this list that we see reductions coming off of, I mean, when you've got Lexia, you know, you've got educational programming that's coming off the board. I'm not sure how much of it is necessarily, um, essential to our NEAS rating. What, uh, what else, what else on this list could you see having a sort of negative impact on that rating, if anything at all, if, if, if anything of significance uh, to a point where it might concern?
Um, you mean on option four?
Option four.
What would concern me?
Yep.
Well, um.
Specifically related to the NEAS accreditation?
It would be, specifically to NEAS, it would be, uh, any, any elimination of clubs and advisors, that would, that would be something they would probably notice as a change, even though they didn't explicitly list it, it would now be a, it would be a substantive change. Library media coordinator would be something that they would notice. Ed tech initiative, you know, unfortunately, it's just you can't get to a number and have everything, so.
Sure.
Um, you know, so I would say the one that, that jumps out immediately would be library media. They do want to have that, the reason that's there is, when I put something here, I'm, I'm going to do my best to find some other funding mechanism for it, I don't know if I can.
Right.
But, you know, I will do my best, and if I can, then we accomplish that anyway, but I don't have a grant in my head I can use for that moment.
Sure.
So that would be the number one that I would be concerned about, and then summer maintenance, I know that's gonna make it, the building of facilities is gonna look kind of not great. Um, and I can go through each of these, but I would say the number one would be the library.
Okay, and there, but there's several, at the end of the day, um, okay. Let me just cross some of these things off here, um. I think I agree with the idea of, while I do want, I do wanna keep, uh, the tech ed, the, the tech ed initiative on the board here. Um, investigating, I think that's a good idea, at least looking into and investigating, um, relative to the, relative to TMS and TEHS, how TIS is utilizing those computers, those Chromebooks, during the day in their learning lessons, during the late day in their learning moments, um, and after, a- a- after as well, I mean, it, it, how, how accessible, um, is the information to children when they have these versus not, and, and I think that's, again, I'm a, I'm somebody who's a visual learner, so, you know, being told something is something completely entirely, entirely different than doing it myself, researching it myself, and finding the data, finding the information, and, 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 and going from there. And so, and having the access to, to find that information is crucial, and so, having worked with fifth graders, fifth graders, fifth graders fall under TIS, um, in Talon, but again, in Manchester, it's fifth and sixth is sort of considered just junior middle school level. Um, and again, you see the impact, whether it's a program like IXL, um, or here, whether it's Lexia for our younger, our younger folks. Um, I mean, there's, there's tremendous impact there, um, and so, I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time getting rid of the Chromebooks, but, uh, specifically for TIS, but I'm happy to go along with the proposition of let's investigate how they're being used at that level. Um, and so, that's where I sort of stand right now, um, in terms of, I guess, if we're going around just saying what we would like to add back and add in, um, other questions on here, but, um, none that are related to sort of that premise, so, I'll just say this, at the end of the day, with the, with the social, with the social worker, with the, with the, with the tech, with the clubs and advisors. And Dr. Will, I, you were the principal when I was in middle school, and so, I'm curious your thoughts, uh, at least for, I think, half of my time in, in middle school. And so, I'm curious your thoughts on this, but, I mean, you don't have to answer this, but, eh, what I hear a lot around the middle school age is middle school is the forgotten age, and, you know, you, you, you've got the developmental levels at, you know, K through five, and then you got that sort of six through, you know, maybe even five through seven, five through eight range, where some of that focus is, is whether it's, whether it's, you know, through outside of this, outside of the building, whether it's at, in chambers like this that we're sitting at right now. Um, the decision makers making the decisions, it's often the forgotten age, and so I don't wanna forget the impact of social work, one social worker, even though, again, personal opinion, we should have way more than one at the middle school level, um, just from experience, and just from literally a week ago, how it impacted one child's life and, and his safety and security. Um, but in terms of the discussion we're having, um, right now, I'm, I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of, of keeping that, keeping that rolling, so I'm losing, losing my words here, so I'm gonna pass it on here, but, um, I, 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 I just want, I hope, you know, and if we go around again, I can get into more as to why I believe that, but my emphasis is on making sure we get a social worker in our middle school, making sure we get people in, in, in front of our students, not only in front of the students, but in front of the families, accessible to family. One to five hundred, you tell me if that's accessible, you know, at, you know, one social worker to five hundred students, it's better than zero to five hundred, but eh, you know, in my opinion, it's, it's just still not enough, so, um, I'll leave it at the additions I just made, which is just the one social worker, the tech, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so I'll have other things come up, happy to go around three.
All right, Brad, you got Jayden's comments on the board?
I do, no, 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 I'm gonna be catching up, because we're, we're, what we're doing is we're taking that option four, we're adding.
Right.
We're adding social worker, we're adding ed tech initiative, we're adding clubs and advisors.
That, that was Jayden's.
Right, so those are ads, which.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
The media, did I not mention the media coordinator?
You did not.
Because that was a huge part of.
Library.
Oh, sorry, well, we got done discussing the, the NEAS, that was sort of the, the point in me asking that. That question was the, the, the necessity of, of having the library media coordinator, so, and add, please add, uh, that in as well. And then what I didn't touch necessarily, but I'm happy to go around and discuss are the four para positions, um, and, and again, talk about it and, and see, you know, see where we are with that, thank you.
Okay.
You good?
I'm good, I'm good for now, I guess I'll ask you the same question next.
Yeah, please do.
Right, your turn, sir.
All right, uh, so I'd like to, uh, clarify, well, first of all, uh, pathways program must have for option four, is this all current and future proposed pathways, or is this just the proposed new pathways that were presented in the original, uh, this year's budget?
So, well, we, we haven't funded pathways in the past, yes.
Excuse me?
We have not funded pathways in the past.
Okay, okay.
This is, this.
It's, okay, yeah, I like to eliminate that.
Um, we're talking option four.
Yeah, option four, where it says must have, I'd like to not have to have that. Um, I would like to input a must-have of Lexia BGP.
Input, meaning?
Yes, to add that back in, because that's in a reduction column, correct?
If I'm.
Yep. We can get it up there to you.
Yeah.
So the tech ed initiative, one-to-one, uh, that was being special last year, this year, all throughout the year. Um, uh, I have a student TIS, so I know we were, we'll look for feedback on how that goes, and what they're used for and whatnot, so. I know my son does use, he logs it back and forth every day. The district likes to use my electricity at home to charge them up, and, um, I'd say he uses them at school, he does PowerPoint presentations, you know, I, I don't know specifically how much during the day he uses them, but they are used. Um, at home lies, I'd say maybe if he hops on twice, twice in a month at home to, that, that they get utilized at home, otherwise they're literally just sitting on a shelf, and twice a month, maybe even a lot. Um, he gets papers printed for mathematics and language arts, take home, uh, they get printed by the staff and thrown in his folder when he comes home. I got math homework, he's not hopping on his computer to do it, I got ELA, I gotta write or read a story and, you know, pick out, you know, what the subject was and answer some questions regarding it, or capitalization and all that kind of stuff.
Right, what are you talking about?
This is TIS, fourth grade.
The tech.
It's tech. I'm just talking about personal experience of my son using, what tech is being offered at TIS, so everyone kind of has a sense for that school, just from my own personal, um, thing, so, as far as the homework goes, a lot of it seems to be done on printed papers. So, um, I would like for him to still have access during the school, um, to definitely utilize computer um, in that, but I don't not know whether that's something to where if there's a savings, a possibility, whether you can have, you know, um, some, a few computers in each classroom instead of twenty-something computers for each individual student, maybe if they're working on a project, work on pairs, I don't know, how they work or have computer labs or something to offset, you know, for every single student to have it, it's just another thought process, so. You know, and maybe that's some sort of a workaround, obviously, probably get feedback from teachers regarding that, but considering we have until next week, I doubt that conversation's really gonna happen, but I, I, I mean, I think we need to get their perspective as well, and whether things, lesson plans are altered, or if that's even a realm of possibility. And then I know last year I had mentioned it a little bit, but also the possibility of, you know, if these computers are being utilized for three or four years per student district-wide, that, um, uh, um, the possibility of pushing the cost for this, uh, onto the parents being spread out to say, you know, over the three-year period, it's, you know, whatever, ten bucks a month, and they cost three hundred and fifty bucks, I mean, it's ten dollars a month for three years to have your kid have a computer utilizing the school system, I mean, that's another possibility. Um, it's, uh, you know, ten times twelve is one twenty, times three is three sixty, I don't know how much the district pays, but it's just another option, if we don't want to include it necessarily in the budget, but there's other things, like people pay for band instruments, or you know, if they're in a play, they might be having some stuff, costumes or whatever, you know, sports, there's other fees that go along with these, for clubs, you have to pay your fees, uh, for the stipend and different things to utilize. It's starting to think that acts so much stuff, but have other options to pay for some of these things. Starting to think that acts so much stuff, but have other options to pay for some of these things. Because I I just, I personally feel that the 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 town is not going to be. You know, rolling with us presenting a a six point seven seven, that's before we add a couple of these back in, that's just my personal opinion. Uh I yeah, I'm in favor of the clubs and advisors, you know, not try trying to eliminate that or finding a way to pay for some of it. Whether it's instituting some fees onto people that participate into these clubs, if there's not fees already. Um set to, you know, raise the fees.
So add the clubs back.
Yeah, I think you said that. Yeah. Or is that not out on four there?
Because right now, for you, I have remove pathways, remove that tech, add Lexia, add clubs.
Yes.
Right, I just want to make sure.
I believe so, yeah, that sounds about, that's that's about right. At nine thirty. And then. Yeah, I definitely would like to explore this each chip of the town and see if we can even. Bump this number up, because uh you uh even more, because like I said, you know, you have to dig in some more numbers on your side. But I do remember that the during the presentation, the gentleman did say that for this current year, that the. Paths of planes was trending um uh. I think more or less in a stable to downward trajectory, wasn't as high as it was in in past year. Uh might be in the minutes from the town, I didn't read it, but that that's what I recall. I'm sure some of the town council members that are out here will clarify our meeting um for that. All right, I'll leave it at, I'll leave that, I'll 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 stop right there for the moment. That's what I got.
So you got, you got all right, okay?
Can we see it all?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm doing is, as you are talking about it, I've just finished Jayden's from a financial perspective. He just finished giving me them, so I'm trying to add the numbers. Yeah, so I have add, I have add Lexia, add clubs, take away pathways, take away ed tech.
Can you put it back down there or no? No, you can't.
I can, what I'm saying um here is that I have, for instance, I have Jayden's numbers done, I just got his nu- you know, his items, so I'm. Yeah, and as you keep going, you might have to give me, once you're all done, you might have to give me ten minutes to do this, I'm trying to do it on the fly.
Oh, before I move on, I like to to to, I don't know, it's not this. Maybe a proposal in the objective, but not the monetary issue, I'd like to keep the ed tech, but I'd like to find if we can. Pass the cost on to the parents.
Yeah.
So I like to keep, but.
Whatever the impact is to the budget and then the strategy for handling it would be, you know, that's outside of budget, that.
Yeah.
That's like, hey, let's try to get it from parents and.
Yeah, that's why I said what I said, yeah, yeah, just from an objective to budget, two different things.
Mr. Buddy?
I got some questions before I give you my thoughts. Um in in option number five, which there's not a whole lot of good in that, but. Just for knowledge, wh- what are the four teachers that you're talking about reductions to their current budget?
I didn't specify.
No, no idea where they'd be.
It would be, you're saying reduce four.
Okay. And you don't know where it could be.
Yeah, you did not have to come up with scenarios like that, you were asked to just say, so that would be. You know, we pick out, we pick the the M A seven. And as our standard to reduce by, and then we would look at it and see who we were gonna.
All right, um. What is the cost for our participation athletically in the C C C? Since they do all the scheduling for us and everything, what is our just initial cost to be a member?
And off the top of my head, I don't know. I have to, I have to find that.
I think I entered that in as a question.
If you if you did, it's. Yeah, so I'll find that, it's just off the top of my head, or see, I don't know what it is.
Okay.
But I'll I'll add that to the.
I asked that question, the the comparison cost to be in the C C C as compared to the N C C C. Of what those those are.
Submit that as a question?
I believe I did. I might do it a second time, just in case.
I'll get it there then.
All right, and um. Yeah, so I'll give you my my thoughts on it, oh, one last question, the um all the Windows eleven monitors, that's. The discussion about the Windows ten being obsolete and not being supported.
Getting rid of the desktops.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and what about the monitors for the math lab and the MIDI lab, same thing?
Same thing.
Okay.
Would just put us back again in that, we'd be running, you know, out of the recommended zone for Windows ten.
Sure, for support, all right. So I guess. When I, when I say my thoughts, a a lot of my thoughts are based on the fact that. I believe a lot of these small items can be found with grants, with these smaller, and it's not big state or federal grants, just smaller grants, so. Um I would be in favor of moving all the Windows monitor stuff um to the cut list. I would be in favor of reviewing that one-on-one tech support for T I S. To see, or the tech ed stuff for T I S, to see how much that's actually being utilized.
So remove Windows monitors?
Yep. Uh the office furniture. Add to the to the option for cut list, the kiln. Again, because I believe those things can be found with smaller grants. I would like to find more savings in that inter-district tuition, once uh the reimbursement rate comes out. With, I'm in agreement with Brian about the pathways program on the cuts, now what I'd like to add back. Are the clubs, and I'd like to expand open choice. Um to K to six, and see what that does. For everything with the uh the revenue involved in that.
The thing is, you'd have to tell me what you would wanna like assume as an offset. So for instance, if we're gonna say open choice is gonna bring in a certain amount of revenue that we just say it's going to be X. Then I would have to enter a figure that we're trying to raise.
I can't give you that figure, because I don't know, so you gotta tell me, if you opened it K through six.
Okay, well, let's estimate four kids, you know, at at whatever, and that would be.
Right.
Sixteen to twenty thousand, you know, that would be the kind of thing that we would be doing.
So I I would say back to you, if our open choice for twenty-five, twenty-six year was open for K through six. What do you estimate we would get for that?
Right, and I think one other F A Q question's asked that, and I threw it out there, I mean, I. It's difficult to um to say what we would get accurately, but I would say typically you're getting about. You know, one or two per grade or every other grade per year, so we probably, given from what we have to what we would be headed towards. Um you know, a couple of kids, you know, maybe three. But it's hard for me to say, especially since we've never done that.
Sure.
So I don't even know what that would draw.
Well, I would like to add that to expand our open choice to K to six, and that would certainly give us something. And then I'm open for the discussion on the pairs still as well.
But you guys are looking at.
I think we're talking about option four.
Oh, and I want to bring back. Bring back the clubs and I I don't know which one of you, I think Brian, you just said it and possibly offset it, if there's fees associated or if there's not fees. Is there normally fees associated with the clubs? As an offset.
Yeah.
Right, so. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure that the clubs, if they're doing. Anything different than athletics, you know, involvement wise should be any more or less. But if I'm paying two hundred dollars for my kid to be on the football team and another two hundred dollars for him to be on the baseball team. And then hundred and whatever the middle school is for the two sports that they play, you know. All these clubs that the kids are involved with, maybe they need, maybe there should needs to be a little bit. More coming from from that to help offset those costs, but I don't know. How busy those clubs are as compared to the athletics.
Yeah, there's a lot of hour difference.
Do there?
Yes, I don't think it's. I'm sure there's hundreds of hours in a club, maybe there's ten hours for.
All right.
Six.
But I want that added back, yeah, I wanted that, I want that off the cut list, clubs.
You want to add that back?
Yes.
The Windows monitors are, they're not out of number four.
I'm saying, put them in the number four.
You want to remove them? Yeah, okay.
Oh, yes, I want them on the reductions.
Yeah, you want to take them out, okay.
Yeah. Well, I said that was up for discussion.
So you want to remove from four, Windows monitors, office furniture, killing pathways, uh inter-district tuition adjustment. You know, which is an estimate. And then you want to add for clubs and advisors, in some estimation of K six or zero.
Right.
You're you would be relying on my estimate, their budget, I said.
I rely on your information that you give us here too. I I know it's, I know it's a, it's a shot in the dark, but.
I'm just specifying.
I I think, I think we can look historically at other schools around us. And you know, not that it's gonna be a perfect, perfect methodology, but you know, I I I think we can kind of. You know, have some conversations with maybe other superintendents, that I'm sure you do, and you know, just bounce it off them and see what they say as well. Kind of get an educated guess. And as a parent that kids play multiple sports, I am okay with. Pay to play, staying where it's at, and having to pay to go in and see my kids play, no matter the bad. If that's what it takes.
I'm just, while you guys are silent, I'm just adding. I'm not gonna be able to catch up to you, like, as you keep giving me stuff, you know, you after you're all done, you'll have to give me a few minutes. But that's as you're going, if you if you're silent.
No, I'm good.
Putting in stuff as you're, you know.
Well, you know, a- and again, I'm gonna steal a page out of the thick of people's books, a lot of my. A lot of my concerns with number four, you know, have been mentioned, I like Bill. Uh I think the Windows eleven. Concerns of supportability uh is certainly something that we can communicate to the rest, I would add that to the reduction list. Uh for option four. I believe that the clubs have to be added back in, I think there's just too much value there to take that out. And and I also believe that the pathways. That is currently a must-have in option four should remain, a must-have in option four. And I think it's a relatively inexpensive way of at least getting a little bit of forward momentum of this 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 year. So, that being said, those those are my my kicker, so.
Uh my number one add is the social worker. I'm astonished it's not everybody's number one add, to be honest with you, because everything that we all talk about in terms of safety intervention, reading. Everything we want for our kids. We need these supports in our schools, and we're going to regret it, I think, um. So, social worker, number one, uh keeping one-to-one tech. Clubs and advisors.
Social worker. You're just giving me the ads, you don't have to say. Your ad is social worker.
Yeah, one-to-one tech. Clubs and advisors. Which, again, by the way, guys, I I love that everybody feels strongly about clubs and advisors, because they're what's good for kids. But we don't all feel strongly about a social worker. Um and then the media coordinator, because again, it's a six thousand dollar stipend and. Everything that we reduce and we're going to reduce, I I just don't think that's a risk we need to take there. Um it was very clear to anyone, I believe, who spoke with the high school administrators. That that was made very clear to them um from the ask, so I see us having to do it anyway. Because I respect what Brian and Dana said um regarding Lexia. I would add that back in, um because it's nine thousand dollars and obviously. You know, reading support is very important, I would like to add more reading intervention this if we could, so I would want them to have that program. Pathways is already in it, I just want to put a plug so that everybody realizes it, again, that was twenty thousand dollars, I believe, we talked about. We're not talking about adding anything back from everything we took away from the high school. Um we have, we lost a childcare program two years ago that had a curriculum with it. Um we lost science teachers, therefore we lost a botany class that they've now started a club because there were so many children interested in that. We have so many children interested in um, you know, nursing, uh psychology, you know, these like dibs are huge. It it's an investment, it's also a reason, I think, to bring open choice kids to our schools. And it's a way to keep our kids, because now they have paths as if like the charter schools, again, it's a small investment at twenty thousand dollars. I'd even, if if that was opening two pathways, I'd say, could we even cut it and do at least let the kids add one pathway? For ten thousand, I don't know if that's how it was split up, but um. I don't see how that doesn't benefit our our children going into college. Again, I would, I would remove for open para positions, as as much as that does make me nervous. To be able to add a social worker, whichever year I've been on this board has been begged for at the middle school level. Um and said that children are suffering from not having that. I I would be okay with removing the Windows eleven, again, because of the things that I want to add. Same with the office equipment, same with Mizella. Same with inter-district.
So let me just catch up with you, you've got add social worker, add ed tech one-to-one, add clubs advisors, add library media, add Lexia, and then take away.
Four pairs.
Take away the four pair, I mean, meaning.
Yep, remove those positions from option four.
Reduction, reduction pairs.
Yeah.
Remove. The monitor.
Notice, okay.
Remove the office equipment.
Mean, reduce, reduce, reduce.
Remove Mizella. Again, look at the inter-district again as a respectable compromise on some of these things, is why I'm doing them. That we can maybe some meet somewhere in the middle.
When you die, so I confirm yours.
If we have a kiln as operating, we can remove that, again, in the spirit of compromise. And I don't know how you're capturing it, but again, in the spirit of compromise, I'd be willing to look at investing in parents. Contributing to tech. To clubs.
Yeah, I mean, those kinds of things are just a strategy to address the reduction.
So you don't want us to bring.
No, you can, it's just they're not gonna have monetary value for your options.
Was there something else that you mentioned, though, um that you were?
Open choice.
That now the parents, the parent contribution? Um I'd be, again, again, I'd be willing to look at the open choice, like Bill said, and open that up. But again, just to be clear, like, some of these things I don't really want to. But I'm hoping you guys can meet somewhere on the social worker.
You want to review.
Yeah, adding social worker, add ed tech, add one-to-one, add clubs advisors, add love library media coordinator, add Lexia. Remove, uh meaning reduce four pairs, reduce windows, monitors, reduce office equipment, reduce Mizella, reduce. Well, I'm gonna have to figure out how to handle that. Reduce the kiln, and then um, you know, do all OC, you know, potential open choice. Reduce the kiln and then, um, you know, do all OC, you know, potential open choice revenue.
Then.
Let me know when you're ready.
The only thing I'd advise against is the, the theoreticals are difficult here because I'm gonna have to choose some arbitrary figure. You know, that make this a little.
If you wanted to clarify something in your. Is that?
I thought that was what he just did.
Yeah, I'm just.
I don't have anything different. I'd like to see the same thing as Jen would like to see. But I'd also ask, like to add the library books back in these either in part or fully at your discretion. And, um, I just would point out, I guess, that, um, safety, security in the school is really paramount and it's not just about response, it's about prevention and intervention as well. So I'd like to see that social worker added back in just so that there's an overall more secure environment for the students. Um, in this case in particular, at T M M.
You could.
I love that. Thank you.
Dana?
All right, thank you. Um. I lost the, I know the Dr. Will, it's a working document, but you didn't have it up on the board anymore. As Jayden said, I'm a visual. But, um, I, I think, no, you're fine. I'm teasing, I'm teasing Dr. Will. Um, social worker, number one. Number one, number two, number three, number four, number five for me. Um. I'd like to explore what one to one tech looks at T I S, although I do see it in my own home. With my son, I'd like to see what it is across, and he's a fifth grader, but I'd like to see what it is across the board at T I S. Um, I think one to one tech has been a slam dunk. Um, I, I was able to to do rounds with, uh, Mrs. Grandy and the T M S when we were in COVID. But I was also able to do rounds at T I S post-COVID with one to one tech, but I think I need some more information like everybody else has talked about and see what that looks like and the impacts of what it would be if we removed it from T I S, the focus. Uh, and clubs and advisors, um, hang on, please. Um, clubs and advisors, I'd like to have that back on, um. We get so much from Decca and the tech club and everything in between. I think it's, um, would be a disservice to our students. Um. And see, the media coordinator, I'd like to discuss that more. Um. I feel pretty strongly about Lexia B G P.
Dana?
Huh?
Get a clarification there. First, the media advisor, for the purpose of what we're doing here, is that something you would like to add back into option four or?
All these are ads, sorry. Social work, one to one tech, but with revisiting T I S, advisors and clubs. Media coordinator, I'd like to talk more. Lexia B G P. Uh, and Katie snuck in library books because I talked about it earlier and I'd like to sneak that in as well, as well.
So what I have is, uh, adding clubs, advisors, ed tech, another one to one, social worker, library, media coordinator, and library books. We're adding those to option four.
Yep, social worker, one to one tech, advisor clubs, media coordinator, Lexia, library books. Don't touch pathways.
The, any reductions, any removes from option four?
I'll, I'll jump on the Windows eleven bandwagon. Jen did say with, Jen did have some good options of compromise earlier that I'd be willing to entertain. Um. But right now, this is where I stand.
Dan, if you still have a voice.
Somewhat. Um, I would do the, um, adding back the social worker at T I S for sure, um, adding back clubs and advisors. And then if I could, um, also do as far as removal, Windows eleven, the office equipment, and then Paris. And those are my big ones.
The office, uh, remove is the windows, the office. Furniture and, uh, pairs.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that good for you, Dan?
Absolutely.
So. Bill now.
Make a motion to go past ten o'clock. So.
Second.
Discussion. Take Brian's look as a voice of excitement. All right, we're voting Katie.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
And, hi, Bill.
Hi.
Brian.
Hi.
Jayden.
Hi.
Dana.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Right, the eyes have it. I'll tell you what, we are going to take. Dr. Willis, five minutes enough or would six make you happy?
I'd give you ten.
So seven minutes. It'll take seven minutes, uh, so Dr. Willis can catch up as far as putting numbers into what we've done and then. Go for it. Take a break. Those online, we'll be right back. Okay. Well, if you want to mute the hour for seven minutes. For everybody online, just FYI, we need about five minutes to get this calculated.
All right, I appreciate everybody's patience as we tried to try to narrow things down. So just a bit of explanation for the people in the room online of what we're going to do. If you recall at the beginning, excuse me, the goal for today was to take the schema, the scenarios, the options, whatever we're calling this. And really based upon the conversations here, narrow that down to one path forward that we can give to Dr. With it. Then go in there, flesh out with numbers, put details so that next week we have a, we have a reachable task that we can talk about. So what we've done, and yeah, Dr. Will, you're showing that. What we've done here is based upon that last conversation where we went through option four and said, what would you add? What would you remove? He then aggregated the number of, let's say votes, the number of people that said add this or remove that. And he came up with this list here. So what I'd like to do now is I want to talk about this. And as a group, if we drew the line, you know, looking at the ad column where we had five people that said clubs and advisors now, just for clarification, that doesn't mean the other two don't want that. It just simply says that they didn't mention it at that point. Three that felt that adding the social worker again back to option four was important, something we wanted to look at. One for the ed tech, one for the library media. On the remove pathways, removing the two or two people said remove pathways from option four. Five were okay with the windows, three for the office, two for the KIML and two for the para education. What I want to do in this network and keeping in mind it's 1015 is I'd like to see where we draw that line on both the ads and the removes. And said, if we draw the line here, then we're okay telling Dr. With it during this next week. Go back, add these, subtract these and produce us an option that is that option four with these and those. I think that gets us close enough that next week the region's. Questions?
So I'm okay with this, but just to be, that's not one for one votes, right? Because like five of us said yes to social worker, several of us said yes to ed tech, several said yes to media.
It's the mentions. So and so if, if the number, you know, if social worker is higher than three, then great. That you know, then social worker is one that we have.
You mentioned you can actually.
No, it's okay. I understand that like I said, me, Jade and Katie, Dana, Indiana said social worker, me, Jade and Katie, Dana said.
So the importance is not whether that number says three or four, but if the line from a board perspective, if the eight of us can get behind adding all the way down, adding the clubs and the social worker to option four. If we can, the four of us can get behind, eight of us can get behind removing windows, office and/or pathways, great, that's what I'm looking. Good?
I just feel like that's kind of, I'm not, I mean, I get what you're saying. In terms of showing how many people support what though, it feels that that doesn't feel accurate in the sense of, I mean, there were five people that did mention the social work. Okay. And there might've been even more for club advisors. And so I'm not saying that well, it's math is wrong, I'm more so saying I, I, I understand.
So let's do it this way, why? Let's, let's do it this way then. And we'll take, we'll just go down, go down that list, Dr. With it, no, let's not go back and count through here. Going back to that, that lets that we end there, we'll just go down through the list and we'll take a vote. With the, I'll give you just a second. I will say, for example, this is not the vote, for, for example, how many people want to add club advisors?
Gotcha.
Yeah, just before we get into this, can I ask a follow up for so in.
We're in a voider, can we get called with our hands that have been up?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see your hand. I'll get to you right after this, Dana, my apologies.
Sorry, I had raised my hand just for the record. You're good. Budget option five. Could clarify the special ed tuition of special ed transportation that were under those elimination program considerations? What would that entail?
Are you looking for a monetary value?
I'm just looking, what, 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 what is the, the reduction in those programs? But obviously we have to have special ed, what is the tuition and transportation that you would, would that is specific in this reduction here?
Talking about a number, yeah.
And also what is, what, what are we, what services are we eliminating for the special education?
We talked about one of those is going to be taking away the assume, you know, the one additional outplacement.
Excuse me?
One of those is taking that one additional outplacement away, it'll be budgeted as a safety.
No, that's already on four. I'm talking about on five, the outplacement's already being reduced already on four.
It's, it's just, these are all taken as a figure and as a reduction, each of these scenarios, whatever's in that program slash adjustments. It's not building off of, and so one doesn't build off the other. So option, are you talking, if you're talking about option five here?
Yeah, where it says special ed tuition and the next one says special ed transportation. What are those specifically that would be says program considerations?
That is the, when we think about what might about above and beyond what we have, we usually will budget one extra for transport, one extra for outplacement. So that's what those are.
You refer me to tuition?
Yes. Outplacement is tuition.
All right, well, because outplacement's already up there. So if we're, if we're interchanging that word, then this one already is excluded then.
We're looking at option four.
Are we, are we at four or five?
I'm, I'm talking about, I'm asking a question of a program consideration for five that maybe I want to add into four. Is what my thought process is. So what he is saying, saying that the special ed tuition is referencing the special ed outplacement, but the special ed outplacement is already reduced in four, so.
Well, that it's not like that. It doesn't cascade like that. Each is, each stands on its own. So and, and, and because I was typing five fairly quickly, you know, special ed. I mean, depending on what you're referring to, it might be the same thing.
I'm referring to whatever you had put in, it's a five.
Okay, so five, so you've asked that, answer that. So what are we looking for? Are you looking for?
No, I don't think it has been answered. I, I.
It's, I've answered that. What were you looking for with respect to that exact? Tuition anticipated, the dollar figure is a hundred thousand, special ed transportation, the dollar figure is 55,000. Those two things together are 155,000. Is that what you're gonna aim at?
Can I go ahead though? So what you have here highlighted, special ed tuition, special ed transportation, go up to option four. Is that the same, just in different word as special ed outplacement? And where's the special ed transportation?
It is, it's just.
Just different words.
I was doing that today. I was trying to get it done fast.
Was that what you were looking for?
Yeah.
That's the same thing. That, that is the same thing. I was just adding them quickly before the meeting.
So there's some cuts.
So they're ready, the cuts are already there. Okay, I just wanted for clarity.
Okay.
Dana? Thank you.
Um, can you put the chart back up? Please, Dr. Will. So there was library books, like library media, obviously multiple of us, I know we all talked about the chart being not correct, but Lexia BGP was also a big conversation. So is that ed tech? Where's Lexia BGP on that chart?
Wasn't as many.
Katie, Dana.
And then ed tech would be one-to-one tech, is that?
Yes, sir.
So there was more, there was more than, I mean, I, we all said the chart was, but I just wanted to make sure that we have everything on the chart that we discussed.
The numbers on the chart, we'll go through them.
Yeah, I just wanted to focus on the actual items on the chart. So I know that on my list, I had library books, Lexia, media coordinator.
You're gonna, you're just gonna revote on those, Tony, right? Add and remove, so whatever needs to be.
So we have library media, which is, is that like, that's library books, but then we had the media coordinator. Was also something that was on there. Those are two separate entities. Right? And then there was library books down below. I just want to make sure that, that the things that all, all of us brought up are on this list, whether it be a one person.
And not, not all of us. What we tried to do during that break was look at the ones that were maybe brought up by one, but discussed by other ones, the ones that truly appeared to be one-offs when we did.
Right. And, and I appreciate that and I'm not in the room, so I wasn't a part of that conversation. But I definitely think that it needs to be on this so that if we're going to go around. But I definitely think that it needs to be on this, so that if we're gonna go around and vote, maybe it might spur something in someone else. That they didn't see or hear, cuz they weren't a part of an another conversation or missed something or or what have you, so. I just wanna make sure that if there's something that even one person had an ad, that that is on this. List. So that we can actually have a good vote on, on that, does that make sense what I'm saying?
It it does make sense.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Ready? Alright, so what I'm gonna do? Don't give me that look, I'm, no, no. What I'm gonna do, uh, and Dr. Will, is we'll go one for one, uh, to the top. I'll call the names as I've got here, and we'll count the eyes and the necks.
So should I blow the numbers out?
Yeah, blow the numbers out. And so we're gonna look at. Okay, so. Adding clubs and advisors again, using option four as a base, adding clubs and advisors back to the option four. Jayden. Am I saying? Or move, sorry, I'm on the wrong list here. What's the purpose of this?
So here's the thing, you can't, you have five different opinions about what should be in there or out of there. And you need to generate a budget tonight that is going to, that is going to be. Either making decision about what truly gets added or not, so as a group, if you can decide, for instance. Option four, club advisors, majority has, you know, yes, you're gonna add that.
So didn't the numbers we just have in there kinda imitated what was in? No, because it was too much confusion and discussion as to whether or not we got the right count here or not, so we're just gonna get it counted now.
Plus you can't have five different budgets.
Let me also make one more point, you're putting us on record if we don't agree with something that we want it out of the budget, like. I didn't mention social worker, but that doesn't mean that I don't think that that's a value. So you're putting us on the spot to to be publicly saying, no, I'm not voting for that.
That's what we'd be doing anyway, at the end of the day, and if we're voting in favor of this. So so please, let me, let me clarify. What I, what we are going to do here is we are not voting on the budget, what we are voting is to whether or not we want. We're gonna send Dr. Will it out of here, saying whose option four is a base. And what we'd like to see next week is option four with these things added and these things removed, that will form the basis of next week's conversation. Okay, now, if you don't, to your point, Bill, I am not forcing anybody to say here, and if you don't want to vote on. Feel free to abstain. That does not, that is not a testament to whether or not you believe that's important or not. It's not a testament to whether or not you wanna have that in the budget or not, it simply says that the budget option we want him to put together. Has that or does not have that.
If you think an abstaining vote for one of these things is not a testament to what you think is in the budget, on a public record vote, you're crazy.
Then I'm crazy. Okay. Alright. Again, adding clubs and advisors for the purpose of developing the this schema, adding it back to option four. And we'll go back to my list here, Katie. Jen?
Aye.
I'm an I. Bill?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jayden?
Aye.
Jesus.
Dana?
Aye.
Dan? Dan? Your speech is tough, feel free to chat. Okay. Second one, and Dr. Will, you got that?
I'm just, we're adding it to budget, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just noting what we're adding or what we're gonna take out, building from option four, what are you adding, what are you taking?
Alright, social worker, adding. Uh, social worker to option four. Katie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Aye, Bill? Brian?
Aye.
Jayden?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Dan? Okay. Alright. That's in X, yes. Adding educational tech, formerly known as one to one, back into option four. Katie?
Can I say, so so I I think this. This here is is a little, I don't think we have the data here to. Necessarily vote and whether this needs to be back in, not back in, get feedback from teachers and different schooling and whether. Parents are gonna pay, or that was gonna pay, I think there's a lot of variables in this. Item, yes, I'd like to see it, but I don't know that it, I don't know, you're gonna throw the number in the budget, but we're just gonna try to collect the funds, that's why I don't know.
Go ahead.
I think, tell me if this, this is how I'm seeing it, I think what we're trying to do is. Get something that we can look at next week, that there was, at least we have some consensus on. But it doesn't mean like, so, Dave, we all said ed tech that we wanted it, it doesn't mean that next week, we also don't talk about, okay. Now that we see what the dollars look here, you know, can we talk about what it would look like to reduce it at one level, to, you know, have parents pay? I think it's more about, can we come up with now a scenario that we're all close enough on? Then then next week, we can kind of pick that apart when we see what all the dollar values. Worked out in, that's how I'm looking at it, if that makes sense. That it's not a final thing, last last year we did this too, we left this meeting last year with a certain thing, and we changed it when we went to vote. It's just to get an an idea of something that we can work on, that's what I think.
And we can get more information during this one, but if there's something that nobody wants to add, then we won't ask the doctor whether to give any more information. Alright, thank you. Alright, so ed tech, and let's start, uh, back over to my last one. Jen?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jayden?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Dan? Okay. Dr. Will, it's back. Alright, adding back into the option for discussion, the library media coordinator, excuse me. Which school is this?
This library functions for the um, middle school, high school as a coordinator, it's a state.
Good question, Katie?
Aye.
Jen?
Just I had, I was gonna tell Brian what it, what it said, I can tell him what that position was.
He's good, he's not. Okay. Jen, you said I, did you say confidently?
I did.
Okay. Bill? Brian?
Man.
Jayden?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Dan? Okay. Four, three, got where they are.
Is that for add?
That's for add. Library books?
Aye.
Jen?
Nay.
I'm a nay. Bill?
Nay.
Brian?
Nay.
Jayden?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Will, this for, oh, sorry, Dan? No. Okay, changing directions here, removing from the option for description, uh, the pathways? Katie?
Nay.
Jen?
Nay.
I'm a nay, Bill?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jayden, to be clear, just to point a clarification, but if I say I, I wanna keep it, if I say nay, I wanna get rid of it. No, if you say I, you wanna remove it from the option, he's nay, let's keep it. Okay. Dana?
Nay.
Dan? Okay, we keep that on there. Do not remove. Yeah, it's already in there. Okay, uh, windows. Removing the windows from the option.
Well, what was that, windows and, was that? These are for teachers or?
Katie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Alright, Bill, this is to keep them not to to remove. So I means we want to remove them out of the budget, correct? Aye. Brian?
Aye.
Jayden?
Aye.
That's on the page from the end, okay. Dana?
Aye.
Dan? Okay, remove, Dr. Will? Office furniture, removing it from the budget. Katie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Alright, Bill?
Aye.
Brian? Jayden?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
There he is. Alright. The office furniture gets removed.
Further, before we go into number eleven, is the kiln currently working, is it broken, is it eighteen years old, or what's the status with this? Piece of equipment, do we know?
Um, I think that this is a replacement for the one that's starting to go bad.
This is at the high school all this soon or?
Yeah, it's at TMS. It's the middle.
Middle school.
Middle school.
Middle school.
Yeah, it's the middle school kiln, because the other one is going down. I I just know it's getting, it's like when the washing machine starts going, it's starting to go.
Yeah, the average cost for this, uh?
Uh, give me a second, I can find that. The kiln replacement is five thousand six hundred and twelve, though.
And to be clear, this is removed, okay. Jen? Aye, Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Lynn, Jayden?
Nay.
Nay, Dana?
Nay.
Nay, and Dan?
Aye.
Remove that. Okay. Removing the four para educator slots from option four. Katie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Alright, Bill?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Jayden, just to be clear, we didn't ever end up discussing this further, so, um, nay. But I'll make a note for. And Dana?
Nay.
Dan?
Aye.
Dr. Will, it removed. And then Lexia. Removing Lexia from option four.
Well, that was an add.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's like the four O here, what you're doing is you are agreeing to take four O out.
Yes, out of option four.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so you're you're adding to option four to reduce four point O FTE.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we have that on add for.
Everything we've Xed is an add to that budget, so.
I mean, this one's a little different because these are FTEs, on each, these items here.
So so Dr. Will, in the description for number twelve, put removal of.
A reduction.
The reduction of, so it's an add or reduction of. That, make it clear, Brian?
Yeah, I guess that's what we wanted to say, little backwards to me, but okay, that's. But the Lexi was mad, though, just wanna clarify that.
Adding the.
Program back, the.
Adding the program back into the.
Literally, yeah.
Katie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Did everybody freeze, did I lose you guys?
I'm frozen too.
Can you hear us, Dan and I are both frozen out?
Yeah, we we, we're trying to rectify that now.
Okay, I I could hear him saying I'm frozen too, but you guys couldn't hear either of us.
Okay.
Okay.
She's telling us that they're frozen, that the internet got them locked out. She's not voting yet. Yeah, we we have to wait.
Yep, I'll I'll hang up and I'll hold, but Dan's also frozen, I could hear him in my ear, but that's about it.
Alright, happy again, give us just a couple minutes.
Okay.